Second.
Okay, there is a motion that we dispense with the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting and approval of the same. And duly seconded, is there any objection? The chair here is none. The motion is approved. So at this point, the chair would like to recognize the following distinguished members who are present today. We have the following: we have Honorable Maria Fea Abunda of Eastern Samar Loan District. We have Honorable Renante Rogansha from the Quezon 3rd District. Alright, we have Honorable Romeo Acop from Antipolo City of the 2nd District. We have Honorable Ray Florence Reyes, Anak Kalasugan. We have Honorable Ricardo Cruz Jr. from Tagig Pateros, the 1st District. We also have Deputy Majority Leader Honorable Faustino Inodí of Isabela, the 6th District. We have Honorable Mark Go of the Baguio City Loan District. We have Honorable Keith Mike Tan of Quezon 4th District. Also, we have our former Chair of the Committee on Health, Governor Helen Tan, the Governor of the Quezon Province. Welcome po. Did I miss? Of course, we would also like to recognize Congressman Neptali Gonzalez of the Mandaluyong City Loan District. Morning. May I now request the Committee Secretary to recognize our esteemed guests and resource persons who are present in this committee meeting for this morning?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, honorable members of the committee. In attendance for today's meeting as resource persons are the following: From the Department of Health, Dr. Alexander De La Fuente, Ms. Julie Rose Di Magiba, Ms. Lindsay Osolino, and Mr. Glenn Cruz of the Development Management Office. Your presence kindly acknowledged, please. From the Department of Health Insurance Corporation or Field Health, Ms. Merla Rose Reyes, Ms. Mr. Glenn David, Mr. Esaklc, and Mr. Fernando Antonio. From the Department of Education, Ms. Maria Corazon C. Dumla, the Chief Health Program Officer. From the Social Security System, Mr. Dennis Imperial and Mr. Emily Lourdes Cardiolin. From the University of the Philippines Institute of Health, Dr. Eva Maria Gutiyonko Delapaz, and Dr. Josefina Lee Uson. From the Philippine Council for Mental Health, Dr. John Aura Laurel Leovado and Dr. Edgardo Valentino Jr. From the Philippine Guidance Counseling Associations, Dr. Adelaida Guinness. The Chief of Hospital of the Quezon Medical Center Province, Dr. Jeffrey Villanueva. The Chief of Hospital of the Bolulakaw Community Hospital, Province of Oriental Mindoro, Dr. Jose Ann Marca. And Dr. Jessica Sabalber Mino from the Eastern Samar Provincial Hospital. That would be all for now, Your Honor.
Thank you, Comsec. So, good morning once again, distinguished members and esteemed guests. In the agenda of the committee meeting today are six bills that are of vital importance in the delivery of health services for our fellow Filipinos by upgrading various health facilities in different parts of the country. The committee shall also tackle the bills providing mental health services and benefits, and the bills on the prevention and intervention of suicide among our youth. The first item in our agenda today is the consideration of local bills. We will begin with House Bill Number 4403, entitled "An Act Converting the Eastern Samar Provincial Hospital in Borongan, Eastern Samar into the Eastern Samar Medical Center in the city of Borongan, province of Eastern Samar, upgrading and modernizing its facilities, defining its powers and functions, appropriating funds therefore and for other purposes," by Representative Maria Fea Abunda. Kong, your recognition.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning colleagues. Nagreklamo si Kong Mark Go eh. Okay, Madam Chair, esteemed colleagues, distinguished guests. Magandang umaga po sa inyong lahat. First off, I would like to thank the committee of this 19th Congress for bringing this well-nedded attention to House Bill Number 4403, "An Act Converting the Eastern Samar Provincial Hospital in Borongan City, Eastern Samar into Eastern Samar Medical Center." "In the city of Borongan City, province of Eastern Samar, upgrading and modernizing its facilities, defining its powers and functions, appropriating funds therefore and for other purposes." House Bill Number 4403 is a repaying of a measure I presented during the 18th Congress. It is the result of an important realization brought about by the pandemic and even by the years before it. And that realization is the fact that Eastern Samar is in need of better medical services. This realization was highlighted during the peak of the COVID-19 pandemic. House Bill 4403 seek an upgrading of the Eastern Samar Provincial Hospital in Borongan into the Eastern Samar Medical Center. The bill aims to improve the current Level 2 status of the Eastern Samar Provincial Hospital into Level 3. This upgrading will afford the hospital the capacity to tend to continuous highly specialized critical care by increasing bed capacity, improving its facilities and equipment, and augmenting the number of hospital personnel. Madam Chair, this legislative measure is very close to my heart. Allow me to explain why. Dito pong nagdaan na pandemic ay naconfirm natin na kailangan ng mas mainam na serbisyo medikal ang mga estihanon. Humigit ko mo lang na kalahating milyon ang populasyon ng aming probinsya. At sa laki ng aming populasyon ay wala ni isang ventilator na makikita sa aming provincial hospital o sa kahit ano pa man ng hospital sa probinsya noong kasagsagan ng pandemya noong 2020 hanggang 2021. Kasagsagahan ng pandemya ay naobsorbahan natin kung paano nahirapan ang mga kababayan ko na maghanap ng hospital na aakma sa kanilang pangangailangan. Mayroon akong ibang kababayan na saksihan mismo na. Habang hirap na hirap huminga ay kinakailangan pa na bumihay na humigit ko mo lang na apat na uras papuntang Tacloban City para lamang makagamit ng ventilator at oxygen. Ang ilan sa kanila ay nasalva pa sanas ang buhay kung may mga malapit lang na mapupuntahan sapat na pasalidad sa probinsya. Madam Chair, feelo congressman, hindi lamang COVID-19 o ventilator ang naitalaan natin na problemang medikal. Nitoong taon 2022 po ay nabiyayaan tayo ng dialysis machine sa hospital na talaga naman nagbibigay ng malaking tulong sa mga pasyente ng Eastern Samar Provincial Hospital. Gayon pa man, 11 units pa lamang ang kinaya ng budget ng hospital. Kung kaya't marami pa rin sa mga kababayan ko ang nagpapagamot at nagpapilitan bumihay sa ibang probinsya. Hindi lamang sa Eastern Visayas, kundi pati dito po sa Maynila. Narian din ang problema ng kakulangan ng capacity ng hospital na mag-hire sa sapat na medical staff at doctor na nasa sapat ng daming dami at kapasidad. Tayo po ay kulang ng manpower. Malaki pa ang service capability gap. Sa kanyang punuan nito dagdag na attention na ibinibigay ngayon sa Eastern Samar Provincial Hospital. Sa pagkakapasa po ng bill na ito ay hindi kailangan magtiis ang mga estihanon. Sa bid to population ratio na 1 is to 1,000, malayo sa recommended na 1 is to 800. Hindi mahirap makita kung gaano kalaking mapahirap sa isang pasyente at sa kanyang pamilya ang biyahe at gastos ng pagpapagamot kung saan kailangan pang lumayo ng pasyente sa kanyang bayan. Which is why, Madam Chair, feelo congressman, it is high time that we afford our constituents with the medical security, and they so deserve the affordable health care promised by no less than the Constitution. Which, while I understand, the national government in recent years has found this challenging to afford an upgrade to many of our medical institutions. I hope we could all take note that this provision Western Samar is very apparently not a matter of privilege but a necessity. And then, steep are being taken by both the national and provincial government to attract better facility from the private sector. But these efforts should not bar the public sector by bringing the cup of quality health care, especially to a developing province such as my hometown, Eastern Samar. Naranasan ko na rin kung paano mag-alaga ng kapamilyang may sakit at kung paano mawalan ng hal sa buhay. Na halos walang tsansa ng dahil sa kakulangan ng access at mora sa likalidad na health care. Alam ko po firsthand kung gaano kahirap ang kawalan ng option pagdating sa kalasugan. And so, Madam Chair, esteemed colleagues, and to the Department of Health, let us open this forum as implore all patient her to help Eastern Samar find its way out of poverty and health insecurity. While I was always be thankful for the support this bill found in the 18th Congress, I hope that 19th Congress would afford an even better chance for the passage of this bill. Maraming salamat po.
Yes, thank you so much, Representative Abunda. May we recognize the resource person from the Department of Health, from the Development Management Officer 3, who is with the Health Facility Development Bureau. Mr. Glenn Cruz to give his response.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to read the proposed position paper from the Department of Health. As soon as the position paper has been signed by our secretary, Dr. Teodora Herbosa, we will be submitting this to the Health Committee. On House Bill Number 4403, or the Act Converting the Eastern Samar Provincial Hospital in Borongan, Eastern Samar into Eastern Samar Medical Center, the Department of Health poses no objection to the proposed upgrade of Eastern Samar Provincial Hospital as a medical center, and recommends it to be under the direct supervision and control of the local government. Based on the 2023 Philippine Statistics Authority, the province of Eastern Samar has an estimated population of 527,282, and currently there's 11 licensed hospitals in the province, wherein eight are privately owned and three are under the local government unit, which are two Level Ones and one Level 2 Hospital. The Philippine Health Facility Development Plan estimates that the gap for Level 1 and Level 2 hospital beds in the province by 2025 are 492 and 244 respectively. So, the service delivery design of the Healthcare Provider Network, or the HCPN, recommends that a province must have at least one Level 1 hospital and one Level 2 or 3 hospital, which the province has already and one level two or three hospital, which the province has already satisfied. So, the the hospital, ESPH, is a one hundred bed level two hospital owned by the provincial government of Eastern Summer. And based on the twenty twenty annual hospital statistics report of this hospital, its bed occupancy rate is ninety-four point ninety-one, which is about um which is above the ideal B O R of eighty-five percent. So, in view of the foregoing, again, we pose no objection that the hospital has to be upgraded, but recommends it to be under the direct control and supervision of the local government. Maintaining direct control and supervision of the proposed hospital to the local government guarantees the full implementation of the province-wide healthcare provider network as enshrined under Republic Act one one two two three or the Universal Healthcare Act. So, it ensures that the HCPN will continuously deliver the necessary healthcare services from primary to tertiary healthcare. So, um, to continue uh to fully strengthen the public healthcare system of the province, the hospital shall be linked to the Eastern Visayas Medical Center, an apex and referral DOH hospital in the province that delivers specialty care services not expected to be provided in the HCPNs. Notwithstanding its ownership, to ensure the operations of the hospital, the DOH through the Eastern Visayas Center for Health Development, or CHD, may provide technical assistance and monitor the compliance to the standards according to the PHFDP and their local investment plan for health, as well as the regional and provincial health facility development plans. So, respectfully submitted for this uh for House Bill number four four three. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn Cruz. Um, before we proceed, we'd like to recognize the following members. We have Honorable Lianda Bolilia, our deputy majority leader from the fourth district of Batangas. And we also have our honorable Yevgeny Vicente Imano of the second district of Misamis Oriental. Um, for now, we would like to recognize um Doctor Jessica Sabelino of the Eastern Summer Provincial Hospital for your response.
Chair, may I? Before we, you know.
Yes, Representative, well, you're recognized.
I think the main objective of Congresswoman Abunda in filing this bill is not for the province to continue operating uh the uh the Eastern Summer Hospital, but it should be under the Department of Health. Uh, so because of probably lack of funding from the local government unit. And I understand and I sympathize with Congresswoman Abunda of her, uh, you know, concern and interest in really improving the quality of services. Right now, I don't know if DOH will be uh interested that they will handle this in terms of supervision and management of the hospital. Kasi parang wala rin silang gagawin eh. They will, they will not do anything except provide technical assistance and uh help them in setting certain parameters in ensuring the quality of service of the hospital. But I think more than that, I think the interest of this bill is to place it under DOH so that it can operate the way it should be in terms of providing quality service uh to the constituents of uh Eastern Summer. So, yun ang pinaka-critical sa lagay ko dito sa bill na ito. Kasi kung they support the bill and they will just tell the provincial government to probably increase the funding and all of this sort, we don't even need to discuss it here in this committee. Uh, so I would uh ask DOH to reconsider their position in terms of uh uh having full administrative and technical supervision as well as control and management of the of this hospital by the Department of Health, Mister, Madam Chair.
Yes, Congresswoman Representative Bolilia.
Madam Chair, I support the sentiment of Honorable Marco because these provincial hospitals were actually devolved from the national government by by virtue of the local government code. These hospitals were devoted to the provincial government without the corresponding peso amount to support it. So, it's very hard for every hospital, for every government uh of government offices to support this. So, like for example, Eastern Summer, uh according to Congresswoman Abunda, is a second-class province. How how can a second-class province run and operate a medical center? The reason why she is she is uh uh filing this bill is to ask help from the national government because the provincial government cannot operate it.
Hindi kaya.
Hindi kaya eh. So, kaya tumatakbo tayo sa national government. So, if the national government cannot do it, the more the provincial government cannot do it.
Thank you. Um, the the responses of our representative Marco and Representative Lianda Bolilia are duly noted and uh hope our representative from the Department of Health also has taken note of their responses. Um, to continue, we'd like to also recognize our Kabatan Representative Raoul Daniel Manuel. Welcome. Also, we will now continue to listen to Doctor Jessica Sabelberino from the Northern uh Eastern Summer Provincial Hospital.
Good morning, esteemed members of this congressional hearing. The Eastern Summer Provincial Hospital is the only DOH licensed hundred-bed level-two hospital in the province, which is situated in the eastern part of Summer Island, particularly in Borongan City. The province has a population of more than five hundred thousand and is composed of twenty-two municipality and one city, a second-class province with a poverty incidence population of thirty-seven point seven. This non-provincial hospital has one hundred fifty-two personnel comprising of twenty-five plantillia doctors, fifty-eight personnel from the nursing service department, seventeen medical ancillary staff, and fifty-two administrative staff. Our ser- our service capability is limited to diagnostic to a level-three licensed laboratory and retrologic services where diagnostic imaging is limited only to x-ray, ultrasound, and CT scan. And recently, a hemodialysis center was added to our hospital services. The other services beyond the hospital service capability is being provided outside of province. Usually, patients are sent to the Apex Hospital, the Eastern Visayas Medical Center, traveling for four hours just to have themselves subjected to higher diagnostic needs like the colonoscopy, endoscopy, and MRI among others. Before the pandemic, the bid occupancy rate of ESPH were one hundred twenty-seven percent at one hundred thirty-nine percent in twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen respectively, but it decreased during the pandemic. At that time, ESPH served as the only provincial COVID nineteen referral hospital of the whole province. And because of the inadequate manpower, we were constrained to lessen the COVID admissions and focus more on COVID admissions. This then indicates the need for upgrading and increasing its bid capacity and hospital manpower complement. Eastern Summer Provincial Hospital has an average of seven thousand patients yearly admissions, fifteen thousand OPD consults, and seven thousand, seven thousand emergency visits with an average of more than five hundred yearly referrals from the other facilities all over the province. In spite of having these patients that we cater, the following are the hospital gaps. One, operating rooms are limited only to two. Most of the patients, particularly the difficult cases like the neurosurgical cases, cancer surgeries, head and neck surgeries, hepatobiliary surgeries, MEGS or the minimally invasive surgeries, and complicated gynecological cases are all being referred to the level-three hospital in Tacloban City. Hemodialysis center is limited to only eleven units. Hence, a great need is really felt in the province. Our laboratory examinations is limited to basic exams for a level-three licensed laboratory. The bacteriology and histopathology has to be improved. All hist- all histopathologic exams has to be sent again to Tacloban City. Retrologic imaging services are limited again to basic x-rays, ultrasound, and CT scan, lacking the invasive retrologic exams like the angiogram. Critical units like the ICU, the neonatal ICU, and the surgical ICU are limited to two mechanical ventilators at any given time. The hospital again is being run and subsidized by the provincial government and no balance billing policy is being implemented. The added benefits if this bill is approved for implementations are: One, it will address the need for more beds to be meet the desired hospital population ratio of one is to eight hundred by the WHO standard. With the modernization of the hospital, it will address the hospital service gaps mentioned previously, which are often the reasons why the patients are referred to hospital outside of province. It will improve the access of our constituents to modern quality hospital services and reduce the out-of-pocket expenditures for health by eliminating or cutting costs of transportation and living expenses if these services are provided in our province. It will also improve the general condition and accommodation of the hospital that is haunted by the leaking roofs, not well-ventilated rooms, as these are the old rooms that have been rehabilitated, and functioning comfort rooms and drainage, making the services of the hospital optimum for recovery. Further, it will address the problems in manpower as there will be a corresponding budget allocated for this which will further improve the efficiency and effectiveness of performance. The additional manpower will generate more employment for our people, thus helping the local economy in the province. Lastly, by addressing regulatory requirements, upgrading infrastructure, enhancing medical staff and technology, and expanding services, offering the Eastern Summer Provincial Hospital can successfully elevate aid capacities and contribute significantly to the healthcare needs of the istihanons in alignment with the objective of the universal healthcare. This upgrade not only improve patient care but also position the institutions as the leading healthcare provider in the province. Thank you.
Uh, Madam Chair.
Yes, Representative.
Question. I would like to know now, how much is the uh budget coming from the local government unit of Eastern Summer Provincial Hospital? Magkano po yun? Binibigay ng local government.
The local government, we depends all our budget from the local government.
Kaya nga po, magkano po yun annually?
The M O O E is twenty-five million one hundred forty thousand.
Yung P S po, what about this?
P S is one hundred fourteen.
So, magkano total?
One hundred per, one hundred fifty-six million five hundred one.
So, if you add all of this, how much is the budget given to you by the local government unit? Magkano po, total?
That is, sir, one hundred fifty-six.
Plus yung M O O E. Kasama na po yun?
Opo.
One hundred. How much is your internally generated income? Yung mga may uh Philhealth, yung ganon, uh, magkano po yun?
Okay, uh, our income, our annual income comes from the Philhealth as well as the Malasakit Fund.
Yes.
With a total of, for twenty twenty-two, we had a one hundred two million.
One hundred two million. So, one hundred million plus one hundred two million annually. Uh, meron po kayong uh budget na pwedeng sama, as budget na more than two hundred million.
Sir, one hundred two millions only, combination of Philhealth income and Malasakit fund.
Kaya nga, pero yung binibigay ng probinsya is one hundred million plus one hundred two, so two hundred two.
Yes.
Magkano? Oh, two fifty-eight. Two fifty-eight po yung budget ninyo, and your capacity right now is one hundred beds. So, yun yun. Ngayon, based on your uh uh you made uh, you you dalitan yung of all your problems, nakalagay po dyan. Sa pag-in yung pong analysis, magkano dapat nyong dapat na magkaroon kayong budget para magawan ninyo. At hindi namangyari yung mga nakakaluhang mga ano nyo, nakabagbagdamdamin ang mga problema ninyo, pati yung yung bubong eh tumutulo, oh.
Uh, actually, sir, based on our hospital developmental plan, the infra and equipments and the P S, uh, there is a need for nine hundred million budget.
Annually?
For the total reconstruction of.
Kasama na po yung P S, M O O E, pati yung capital outlay. Yung pong capacity ninyo ngayon is one hundred. If you will have this bill approved, how much do you need for capital outlay? Meron o kayong ganon? Kasi meron akong proposal dito para ma- ma- address na natin to, Congresswoman Abunda. Meron akong recommendation na eh, oo. Whether DOH or not, we'll agree, uh, you know. So, meron po kayong estimate? Siguro meron kayong standard sa DOH? Pag galimbawa, naging three hundred ambed capacity nila, how much is supposed to be the budget?
Um, Madam Chair, we don't have the information right now, but we can get back to.
Okay.
The equity, thank you.
Sige, oh. So, uh, unless there are other, you know, I will propose already if it can be done.
Madam Chair, uh, with the with the indulgence of Congressman Go, we would like to start, uh, very short, tatlong tanong lang po, Imano. Uh, sino gumawa ng hospital? Uh, it's a S Pro, no? Eastern Summer Provincial Hospital. Who built the hospital?
The provincial government.
The provincial government. And who was managing the hospital since it was started hanggang sa, until now?
Still the provincial government. It was devolved. Initially, it was uh managed by the regional DOH and it was devolved to the provincial government.
When it was dev- uh, because when I was governor for nine years, I managed like eight provincial hospitals. And usually, um, usually DOH, once they uh devolved hospitals, there's a memorandum of agreement that is signed. And including in that memorandum of agreement is the annual subsidy of the department from the Department of Health. Yeah, may we know if uh when it was devolved to the provincial government, the services and the management, which were devolved? Operation?
Devolved. Province.
The devolved to the province?
Yes.
Did you, did you sign a memorandum of agreement with DOH?
Not, I know, sir. I can't.
So.
The only assistance that.
No, 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 it's not about the assistance, Doc. It's about what were the documents that you're holding on to when the operation of the hospital was devolved to the provincial government from DOH? And the the support services?
We don't have.
Do we have, Mr. Chair, a representative from the provincial government invited, uh, Madam Chair?
Wala po.
Oh, because it supposedly, Madam Chair, as I have said earlier, before hospitals are the DOH usually, what they do to our provincial hospital is that when we want to upgrade, we actually apply to them from infirmary to level one, level two, level three, that's what we usually do. Then they give us a checklist of requirements.
Yes.
And then we upgrade. Uh, by the way, as of now, uh, the hospital is level.
Level two, sir.
Level two.
Hundred-bed capacity.
Hundred-bed capacity. So, um, when it was upgraded to level two, you want it upgraded or to to level three? But there's a checklist that DOH is giving us. May we know if you were able to comply? The checklist, the requirements that DOH has, uh.
Only for level two.
Level two, and you want to upgrade to level three?
Yes. Yes.
But, uh, from level two to level three, you want DOH to infuse funds?
Yes, sir.
Be under DOH? So you want it from, uh, from, from the devolution of the hospital, you know, you want it back to DOH?
Yes, sir. Not sure none.
Oh, and DOH doesn't, will not agree?
To be managed by the local government.
Because, you know, Madam Chair, you know, the, the, the bill, you know, will, this, this will take time. And as of the moment, the hospital has to, has to continue its operation, hopefully, maybe not level two, not, maybe to level two point five, somewhere in the middle.
Yes.
But they have to help already. Do, do they have the commitment that while the bill is pending and we are, we are still working on the bill, that they will be infusing funds?
None, sir.
Uh, Congressman Imano, there are two things they will do. Number one is they will provide technical assistance, that's what they said. And number two, they will continue, uh, ensuring, uh, the quality operations of the hospital by setting the parameters. So the standards.
Yeah.
That's it. Walang infusion of, uh, uh, additional capital budget.
Madam Chair, if I may ask, Manong, the, the, uh, the, the, the good doctor, if, if you will operate it at a level two, uh, category, do you have enough funds from the provincial government?
Yes.
Kung level two, ah, as, as of now, okay, may, may pondo, okay tayo. Complete the doctor natin, nurses and other equipment and facilities if we operate at level two.
In spite of being a level two facility, we're, we still lack manpower.
Oh.
Opo, atsaka, and equipments.
Actually, um, uh, for nine years, when I was governor, usually what DOH does is that they will require the local governments. Uh, they will require local governments, and once we are able to comply with all the requirements, then that's the time they upgrade us to a certain level. That's how they work. Uh, Madam Chair.
Also take note that, uh, so the, the purpose of the bill is not just to upgrade the bed capacity. It's conversion from provincial hospital to medical center. When we say an hospital, a medical center, it will require more budget. Do I unders-, do I understand it right? Kasi pag medical center, parang, the, the department talais natin to, di ba? You have Department of Surgery, Department of Pathology, is that correct? Tama po ba? So it's more expensive, it's not just upgrading it into higher level of bed capacity. So it's a medical center, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So it's just that upgrading or increasing the number of bed capacity. So it will require more funds, which the provincial government cannot afford.
Uh, Ma- Madam Chair, with the narration of the head of the hospital, of all the problems, they are not even operating as a level two, uh, hospital because they have limited budget already under the level two cate-, category of the hospital. Kasi kung okay sila sa level two, uh, they, they should have addressed all those concerns that our uh, head of the hospital said earlier, Madam Chair. So I think, uh, the recommendation of, uh, our proponent here, Congresswoman Abunda, to make it a DOH hospital is, uh, load the ball. And, uh, uh, that's what we need, actually. Uh, but I, I would like to put a colloquial there that, uh, the amount that is given already to the hospital by the local government should remain. If they're giving one hundred million, they should continue giving that. Uh, in addition to what will be appropriated by the department of, I mean, by, by us, uh, here in Congress. Uh, Madam Chair.
Madam, Madam Chair.
Yes, uh.
Uh, clearly, there's a need, again, from what we've heard from our colleagues and also resource persons, clearly there's a need to upgrade, you know, um, the Eastern Summer Provincial Hospital to a medical center. And given, if I remember, type of a thirty-seven percent poverty incidence in the province? All the reason that the healthcare services in the provinces need to be provided for to their people, because they cannot afford uh, to go to private hospitals or any other kind of hospital. So with that said, uh, Madam Chair, given also that this was already passed uh, in third reading, on third reading last Congress, I move that we approve House Bill number four four zero three, Madam Chair.
Second, Mr. Chair.
On that, in terms of the appropriation, whatever is being, uh, given by the local government to the hospital should, uh, should be maintained, uh, Madam Chair.
Okay, we have a motion for the approval of House Bill number four four zero three and duly seconded. Uh, there being no objection, the, the motion is approved.
With the note that, uh.
With the note that, uh, whatever has been, already been given, uh, with, uh, with the provincial hospital currently.
Yeah.
Uh, should be continued and then maintained for the operations of the hospital.
Yeah.
Congratulations, Representative.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to my colleagues. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
All right, um, we will now proceed to, um, House Bill number. Yes, we will now proceed to House Bill number three six zero six, an act entitled, uh, converting the Kauayan District Hospital in the city of Kauayan from province of Isabela into a general hospital to be known as the Central Isabella General Hospital and appropriating funds therefore by Representative Austino Inodi the fifth. You are recognized, Congresswoman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, similar to our colleagues, uh, today, um, I myself too would like to, you know, have our district hospital be improved or be upgraded to a general hospital. Because, uh, uh, just like, uh, Congresswoman Abunda, uh, if you look at the province of Isabela, uh, currently, uh, there's only one uh, medical center in the southern part, uh, in the independent component city of Santiago City. Uh, however, uh, Madam Chair, we are the second largest province in the country with a population of almost one point eight, one point nine million people. Um, marami po sa aming mga bayan would travel about three hours also to just go to these, uh, to Santiago or to the Southern Isabella Medical Center. Talagang malayo po, and most of them would rather go to private hospitals. Uh, also, because nga, pagdating dito sa district hospital sa Kauayan, eh kulang po ng facilities, and most of the time, yung concerns po nila, eh talagang napaka inaaksidente, ma- malubay yung sakit. Um, so upgrading the Kauayan City District Hospital to General Hospital is really needed, uh, in the province, specifically also uh, because Kauayan City, if you look at the map of the province of Isabela, is central to the province. It also will cater to the provinces of Ifugao, Kalinga, and the other neighboring provinces. Marami pong pupunta dumadayo sa aming lugar para lang po magpagamot. Uh, and also, again, uh, just like our colleagues who want to upgrade their, uh, hospitals. Ang, ang problema daman po natin pare-pareho po tayong lahat, most of us public servants, ang concern na dinadala po sa atin ang mga kababayan po natin is, uh, pagdating po sa kalusugan sa mga hospital bills po nila. And if they are in private hospitals, although the DOH is currently assisting and supporting them through the MAIP program, uh, may limitasyon din po ito. And sometimes with a hospital bill that amounts to five hundred, six hundred, even a million pesos, it really is a matter of, for a person, it's a matter of going into poverty and not. So it's all the more reason, uh, Madam Chair, that, uh, there needs to be a primary healthcare, uh, service provider that is up to the standard, that is what is needed today, uh, para po ma-serbisuhan or mabigyang serbisyo po ang ating mga kababayan. So, uh, with that, uh, Madam Chair, I hope that our dear colleagues, uh, and the resource persons with, uh, agree that, uh, that the Kauayan City District Hospital needs to be uh, upgraded and under the direct supervision and administration of the Department of Health. So thank you, uh, Madam Chair, yun lamang po.
Thank you, DML Inodi. Uh, we would now recognize the Chief of Hospital, uh, Dr. Anna Velin Rognaw, for her response.
That's your doctor?
The food. Yeah.
Good morning, po.
Okay, um, we would now proceed to, once again, our, uh, resource person from the Department of Health, uh, Mr. Glenn Cruz to give his response.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I'd like to read the proposed position, the highlights of the proposed position paper regarding House Bill number three six zero six for an act converting Kauayan District Hospital as the Central Isabella General Hospital. Um, as, uh, as soon as this is signed by our Secretary of Health, Dr. Chodora Herbosa, we will submit it to the House Committee on Health. So, uh, the proposed position paper reads that the Department of Health poses no objection on in converting Kauayan District Hospital into a general hospital and recommends that it remains under the direct supervision and control of the province of Isabela. Um, further, the DOH recommends the following in this regard. To remain under the direct supervision and control of the province of Isabe-, Isabela is in compliance with Executive Order number one three eight, series of twenty twenty-one, which provides for the full devolution of certain functions of the executive branch to the L G U. Maintaining the ownership and control of the hospital by the province shall ensure that the healthcare provider network or the H C P N can deliver continuous healthcare from primary to tertiary. The Kauayan District Hospital may be upgraded to level two hospital in order to supplement the existing hospital bed gaps, um, in the province according to the Philippine Health Facility Development Plan. Now, the city of Kauayan's healthcare provider net-, network should be linked to an apex or end referral hospital that delivers specialty care services not expected to be provided in the H C P N. So the hos-, Apex Hospitals, that is most nearest is the Southern Isabella Medical Center, a level three DOH hospital in Isabela, uh, in Santiago City, and which is approximately fifty, uh, fifty-eight minutes away from the district hospital. So the DOH through the Kagayan Valley Center for Health Development may continue to support the province and monitor the compliance of the standards in accordance to the PHFDP, the Local Investment Plan for Health, and the Regional and Provincial Health Facility Development Plans. And this is, this will be respectfully submitted. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn Cruz. Uh, once again, we would like to recognize the Chief of Hospital of the Kauayan District Hospital of Isabela, Doctora Anna Velin Rognaw. You may, uh, give your response.
Good morning, po. Um, the Kauayan District Hospital is a government-owned and operated hospital under, under the leadership of the provincial governor of Isabela, uh, Honorable Rodolfo, Rodolfo T. Albano the third. It is a level one hospital with an authorized bed capacity of fifty beds. The Kauayan District Hospital is mandated to deliver unaccessible, affordable, efficient, and quality healthcare services to the people in a safe and competent health facility, giving priority to the poor and marginalized. The institution has been serving as the core referral hospital of its primary catchment areas, Alicia, Angadanan, Kabatuwan, Luna, Reyna Mercedes, San Guillermo, San Mateo, and Kauayan District Hosp-, and Kauayan City. We also serve our secondary catchment areas, Itshage, San Isidro, San Mariano, Borgos, Rojas, Ramon, Benito Soliben, and Alfonso Listah. We also cater patients coming from as far as the coastal municipalities, Palanan, Makunakon, and Dibilakan. This does not prevent, however, adjacent provinces from bringing in or hospital their patients for various healthcare services. Uh, we offer, uh, medical services, obigyni, pediatrics, general surgery, and orthopedic surgery. Uh, but complicated surgeries and complicated cases, uh, we, we refer these patients to tertiary hospital, uh, which is as is Southern Isabella Medical Center in Santiago, because, uh, our hospital lack facilities for such cases. Uh, we support the bill of Congressman, uh, Inodi for better health services to more Isabeles.
Thank you, Doctora Rognaw. Um, anyone from the members who would like to give their, uh, comments on the bill? If we no longer have any, uh, comments, uh, for this bill, uh, may I hear for a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that, uh, we approve on the committee House Bill number three six oh six.
So there is a motion? There is a motion, uh, for the approval of House Bill number three six zero six and duly seconded. Uh, Chair hearing, no objection, the motion is approved. Congratulations, Congressman.
Madam Chair.
We will now proceed to House Bill number four two four four, entitled an act converting the Quezon Medical Center in the city of Lucena, province of Quezon, into a tertiary level hospital and regional training center and appropriating funds therefore by Representative Keith Mica, Attorney Mike. Tan, you are now recognized, Congressman.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, good morning po sa ating lahat, esteemed colleagues and, uh, fellow House members and, uh, our resource persons. House Bill four two four four six to increase Q M C's authorized bed capacity from two hundred to seven hundred beds amid the growing population of Quezon province. The move will cater to the medical needs of the province and its neighboring localities and aims to convert the Q M C into a tertiary level hospital and regional training center, which shall be under the direct control and supervision of the DOH. This measure was approved on third reading last Congress, and it is about time that this Congress will hopefully see the fruition of the proposal to upgrade Q M C into the law to conform with the policy of providing quality and efficient healthcare services in line with the universal healthcare agenda. May I therefore ask the committee's favorable consideration of this bill? Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, uh, Congressman Tan. May we, uh, listen to our former colleague, uh, Governor of the province of Quezon, Governor Helen Tan, for her response.
Thank you. Maraming salamat po, uh, Madam Chair. Good morning po sa uh, esteemed members of this, uh, committee and resource persons. Maraming salamat po for including our, the bill of Congressman Tan on today's agenda. As a backgrounder, uh, during the, mm, the eighteenth Congress, we were able to pass this into, uh, final third reading, no? So nakarating po ito sa Senate. And I think dahil sa, uh, kakulangan ng oras, hindi po natapos sa Senate. Just want to, uh, give a backgrounder of Q M C. Quezon Medical Center po, I, next year will be one hundred years since it was established, no? Under the direct control of the provincial government, it is a bed two hundred bed capacity. As mentioned in the bill, uh, the request of seven hundred is, uh, because uh, currently the bed occupancy rate is at two hundred fifty percent. So Quezon Medical Center is the, uh, is level two hospital, but currently through the initiative of, uh, the provincial government and of course, the medical center chief was with me right now, Dr. Jeff Billionueva. We are now, uh, level three hospital and tr-, training and teaching. So meron na po kaming, uh, residency trainings ng, uh, four core training programs, uh, internal medicine, surgery, uh, pedia, and, uh, hopefully next year, obigayin, no? Uh, also anesthesiology. So bakit po hinihingi namin na sana ito ay ibigay sa Department of Health, no? Katulad po ng ibang mga panukala. Uh, isa lang ang rason, no? Uh, nahihirapan po kami financially. For province of Quezon, we are operating fifteen hospitals. Para po alam ninyo, I you know the geographical orientation of, uh, Quezon, no? Marami po kaming island municipalities. So, uh, currently, ang na-infuse po namin, a fund jan, almost a billion. Sabi ko nga po sa kanila, kahit buong N T A namin, na-i-infuse namin. Sabi ko nga po sa kanila, kahit buong N T A namin, na-i-infuse namin, still enough because we are operating one hundred percent N B D. Mahirap na probinsya po ang Quezon. Kami po ang pinakamahirap sa, uh, kalabarzon, although, uh, first-class province po kami, no? So, lahat ng efforts naman po ay ginawa natin. But, ang trust ngayon, under my leadership, ay, uh, bigyan ng equal access all the Quezonians, no? Uh, which means we need to upgrade other district hospitals, which will be under our control, no? So, we've anti- identified four district hospitals, uh, covering, uh, it's strategically located, covering other municipalities, no? So, ginagawa na po namin ngayon ito, and, uh, alam ko alam ng DOH siyan, no? We've upgraded, uh, the facilities ongoing, uh, even the P S. At lahat po ng support binibigay namin. That's why we want the help of DOH, no? Na ibigay sa kanila, uh, so that, uh, the funds nagagamitin po namin for Q M C ay ma-distribute namin at magkaroon ng access po 'yung ating mga, aming kalalawigan naman to a higher level of access. Currently po, may, uh, healthcare provider network na kami, no? Uh, primary care provider network na din po kami. Uh, but still, 'yung reality po of kakulangan talaga doon sa financials because we now have one thousand four hundred plus, uh, employees, two hundred plus of which are permanent, and eight hundred plus are, uh, job orders, and four hundred plus 'yung atin pong, uh, casual, no? Sa Quezon po, ang bed-to-population gap, no? If I, uh, share with you, ay nasa one thousand two hundred eighty-three. So, kulang na kulang pa po sa Level Three, no? Yun po ay, uh, may data ang DOH also na malaki ang kakulangan sa Quezon on, uh, from Level One, Level Two, and Level Three. So, that's it, uh, Madam Chair. If you can give lang a few minutes po, uh, with the Medical Center Chief to, uh, uh, add more, uh, inputs on, uh, the current situation of Quezon Medical Center.
Yes, uh, thank you very much, Governor Helen Tan. We'd like to recognize Dr. Jeffrey Villanueva, um, the, the Chief of Hospital of the Quezon Medical Center, Province of Quezon. Yes, you're a recognized doctor.
Hello. Uh, good morning to all mem- the honorable members of this, uh, committee, and good morning also to our Honorable Governor, Doctora Angelina Helen Tan. To add further to what was already mentioned by our good governor, I would like to enumerate some of the reasons or rationale why we are proposing for the renas- renationalization of the Quezon Medical Center. Uh, we have given at least three main reasons. One, it's the effect on the hospital itself. Second is on the impact of our patients, and third, on the impact of our employees. What will be the benefit that we will, this, uh, different stakeholders in case that, uh, this, uh, honorable body would approve the proposed bill? First, in the, on the effect of the renationalization on our institution, there are actually four major reasons or categories under which, and that is the budgetary requirement. Second is the sustenance of the clinical training programs. Third is the, uh, continuous improvement of the infrastructure and upgrading of our equipment. And fourth is the continuous, uh, maintenance of the initiate- of what we have already initiated, and that is the sustainable, uh, quality management system because we are also in the process of acquiring an ISO certification quality management system nine zero zero version of tw- twenty fifteen. Actually, if, uh, Quezon Medical Center would be able to acquire, being a Level Three and at the same time ISO certified, we are going to be one of a very few provincial hospital in the Philippines with such, uh, distinction. Okay, well, with, uh, currently with regards to the, uh, budgetary, uh, maintenance of the hospital, we are classified as an economic enterprise unit. Uh, but even though we are considered as economic enterprise unit, we are only able to generate forty percent of our operati- operational capacity and around sixty percent of our O P X requirement is being subsidized by the provincial government. Uh, this is due because the number of pa- though we are, as mentioned by our good governor, we are an accredited two-hundred-bed capacity, uh, Level Three Hospital. Our census is beyond the capacity of the hospital. That's why our operational bed, uh, can reach as high as six hundred twenty-one beds. Uh, on a daily basis, our daily census, when we started, is around five hun- last year, uh, and, uh, upon the start of the governance of Doctora Helen Tan, the daily inpatient census is five hundred eighty average. And we have two hundred, uh, two hundred beds only. So, all our resources are burned out. Our human resources, the number, our nurse-to-patient ratio reach as high as one is to twenty, one is to eighteen. And the requirement of DOH is for our government institution is one is to twelve. For a private institution, one is to eight, is to ten. And if we would, ideally, even though we are a government institution, we would like to have a ratio that is comparative to a private institution that has always been the clamer of so many patients. How come the ratio or the treat nursing, uh, and medical services is not at par with private? When supposedly it should. Whether you are a government institution or a private institution, the delivery of service, whether it's nursing, medical, should be the same. Whether you are accessing health care by free or you're paying for it, it should be the same. That is what we would like to attain. But we know for a fact that we are limited not only by the, uh, available nursing staff that we can top, but we are also limited by the financial resources that we, that is provided to us or that is available for us to hire these people.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
In deference to the honorable Governor of, uh, Quezon, Honorable Helen Tan, who came all the way here to be with us today and, uh, being, um, former Chairman of the Committee on Health, have been instrumental to the conversion of many hospitals to higher level and upgrading many hospitals to tertiary or secondary level hospital. I move that we approve on this committee House Bill Number Four Two Four Four.
Second, Madam Chair. Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Representative Bolilia. We have a motion for the approval of, uh, House Bill Number Three Six. Where are we? Four Two Four Four. Uh, there being no objection, the motion is approved. Congratulations, Governor. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Congressman Keith.
Maraming salamat, Madam Chair, and, uh, to the honorable member of this committee. Maraming salamat po.
Congratulations. Uh, we will now proceed to the reading of, uh, House Bill Number Four Five Eight, entitled An Act Upgrading and Converting the Quezon City General Hospital into a medical center to be known as Quezon City General Hospital and Medical Center, appropriating funds therefore and for other purposes by Representative, uh, Juan Carlos Arjo Ataidi. And I would like to recognize the Deputy Majority Leader, uh, Congressman Inodi to sponsor the bill.
Madam Chair, uh, I was tasked with the Honorable Arjo Ataidi to sponsor his, uh, Bill Number Four Five Eight for an act upgrading and converting the Quezon City General Hospital into a medical center to be known as Quezon City General Hospital Medical Center. With that, uh, Madam Chair, eh, may I request that his explanatory note, uh, be used as his sponsorship speech? Uh, thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, may we, uh, recognize Dr. Josephine Sabado Sa Pan- Sa Panto, uh, to, uh, give her response on the bill.
Okay, good morning to the honorable members of this House of Representatives, as well as the, all the people who are here today. Uh, I am Dr. Josephine Sabando, the Medical Center Chief of Quezon City General Hospital. Now, uh, this is about House Bill Four Five Eight renaming Quezon City General Hospital to Quezon City General Hospital and Medical Center. Now, Quezon City General Hospital is a Level Three, uh, two-hundred-fifty-bed-capacity teaching and training hospital located at the Seminary Road Corner Edsa in Quezon City, and it serves and, and caters to three-point-one million, uh, constituents of Quezon City. Now, it actually was initially ra- the, the structure itself was initially run by the Jesuits of Ateneo, and this was, uh, bought by the Quezon City Government, uh, through Mayor Roberto Amuranto in nineteen sixty-seven, and it started to operate as an infirmary. However, on August twenty-sixth, nineteen seventy-two, Republic Act Six Five Four Eight, an act for the amending Republic Act Five Seventy-three, the revised Quezon City Charter, became a law under the incumbency of President Ferdinand Marcos. Republic Act Six Five Forty-eight elevated Quezon City General as one of the city departments. Now, it was in nineteen seventy-eight that the Quezon City General Hospital started to accept and train, uh, graduating medical students, postgraduate interns, and later followed by the resident physicians for a residency training program. Now, the hospital underwent several redevelopment, and in two thousand nine, under the mayorship of, uh, uh, on its premises, which is, uh, previously used as a parking lot, was done. And it houses several, uh, modern equipments such as a four-D ultrasound, sixty-four-slice CT scan, uh, magnetic resonance imaging, mammogram, which is supported by a patient archiving communication system. The laboratory services offered are the clinical chemistry, a tertiary-level blood bank, serology, immunology, histopathology, and cytology. And, uh, it was actually, uh, it also houses the surgical and medical intensive care unit equipped with central monitors and individual patients' monitors per bed and the operating room complex with five major operating rooms, one of which has a view deck for training students and two more operating rooms at the O B D R L R complex. Uh, through the years, additional services were inaugurated such as the eye center, the hearing center, which are both located at the fourth floor, the intermediate care unit and the third, at the third floor, and the human milk bank, the Alysies at the second floor. We also have minimally invasive surgeries such as laparoscopy, ultrasound-guided biopsy, and the animal bite center, H I B treatment hub, which we are recognized by the Department of Health as one of the pioneers for the treatment of H I B, and a one-stop shop facility for the victims of violence against children and women, uh, called the Protection Center. Now, in August eighteen, we already had our ICE accreditation, and it was recertified after a year, and it is valid for three years. And we are proud of being accorded as the most outstanding hospital for two consec- consecutive years, twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen, by the Philippine Hospital Association. And also, we had an international award given by the Hospital Management Asia in Singapore in twenty seventeen. Now, on May twenty nineteen, the outpatient department was inaugurated. From a single-floor building, it was renovated to have a second-floor housing diagnostic services catering to outpatient, dental services, and the drug testing center and auditorium. At present, Quezon City General Hospital is one of the Level Three Hospitals under the Le- Level, uh, L G U in Metro Manila, and it boasts of ten accredited training programs of the different specialty societies. So, we produce specialists from internal medicine, obstetrics and gynecology, pediatrics, surgery, family and community medicine, anesthesiology, ophthalmology, otolaryngology, pathology, and radiology. We also have a fellowship training program for geriatric medicine, C T, M R I, and ultrasound. Aside from the training program, actually, Quezon City General Hospital is at the progr- is at the forefront in managing the COVID-nineteen patients during the pandemic. We are actually one of the few hospitals who set up the tents for patients exhibiting respiratory systems on January of twenty twenty, and later on, we became the referral center of the other two L G U hospitals, namely the Nobalichas District Hospital, which is a Level One hospital, and the Rosario Maclang Bautista General Hospital, which is a Level Two hospital. Now, with above narrative, Quezon City General Hospital's growth and development reflects the advances and great strides to count itself as among one of the city's leading medical facility. However, despite of it, the Quezon City General Hospital has not changed its name to reflect the status and functions. So, it is therefore respectfully submitted to the honorable body that the long overdue renaming of Quezon City General Hospital to Quezon City General Hospital and Medical Center is befitting, timely, and proper to better represent its id- identity, mission, and vision as a modern and comprehensive health care institution. The renaming will not only recognize the current state of the hospital, but also will recognize the efforts of its past and present medical workers and personnel in advancing the state of the hospital from its humble beginnings so as to where it is right now. So, this will help foster a sense of pride, fulfillment, and commitment among the hospital staff, the patients, and partners as well, and will encourage them to work together to achieve its, uh, goal. Now, uh, the second, uh, reason why we are asking for this is, I, I was previously was designated as the hospital director, but through the D B M renaming opposition, uh, based on D B M index occupational services, uh, salary grade and, uh, class, uh, my, my, my ti- my position title was then renamed into a Medical Center Chief too. So, I guess with all of these reasons, we, we move for the approval of the renaming of Quezon City General Hospital to Quezon City General Hospital and Medical Center. Thank you po.
Thank you, uh, Dr. Josephine Sabando. Um, may we now, uh, call on, uh, Mr. Glenn Cruz, uh, for his, um, position.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I'm going to read the proposed position paper on House Bill Number Four Five Eight, um, upgrading the Quezon City General Hospital into a medical center and to be known as Quezon City General Hospital and Medical Center. Um, and this will be, uh, submitted to the, uh, uh, House Committee on Health as soon as the, our Secretary Chodora J. Herbosa um, will be, uh, will be signing this position paper. So, the Department of Health supports the proposed upgrading of Quezon City General Hospital into a medical center um, and recommends that it be under the direct supervision and control of the local government or the city of Quezon City. Um, we will have no con- uh, we have no objection to this, and we just have to remind that the medical center is hu- is a hospital that's staffed and equipped to care for many patients for a large number and kinds of diseases and dysfunctions using modern technology. So, consistently, would you us further recommend that the Section Four of the bill to state that the necessary amount needed for the provision of this act shall be provided by the L G U? Other than that, we are respectfully submitting this position paper. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Glenn Cruz. Um, before we proceed, I would like to recognize, uh, Representative Ron Salo of the Cabayan Party list for his attendance. Um, anyone else, uh, from the members who would like to give their comments? If none, may I hear a motion?
Madam Chair, uh, there being no other members who wish to interpolate or give any comments, I move that we, um, approve, uh, House Bill Number Four Five Eight of the repres- or of Honorable Arjo Ataidi. So, move, Madam Chair.
We have a motion for the approval of House Bill Number Four Five Eight, duly seconded. Uh, there being no objection, the motion is approved. Congratulations. We shall now proceed for, uh, the reading of the House Bill Number Two Seven Two Three, entitled An Act Increasing the Bed Capacity of the Bulalakaw Community Hospital in the Municipality of Bulalakaw, Province of Oriental Mendoza, from ten to fifty beds, and appropriating funds therefore by Representative Alfonso O'Malley Jr. We, I would like to also recognize Deputy Majority Leader Inodi to sponsor the bill.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Likewise, I was tasked to sponsor House Bill Number Two Seven Two Three of the Honorable Alfonso O'Malley Jr. Uh, may I request that his explanatory note, uh, be used as a sponsorship speech for House Bill Number Two Seven Two Three. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, um, Congressman Inodi. May we also recognize now the Chief of Hospital of the Bulalakaw Community Hospital, Dr. Josie Anne Marca, for her response.
Magandang umaga po. Bulalakaw composed of total population of forty-four thousand three hundred Magandang umaga po. Bulalakaw composed of total population of forty-four thousand three hundred fifty-four, composed of fifteen barangays. Bulalakaw Community Hospital is the only existing hospital in the town. Wala po kami private clinic, wala rin kami private hospital. Ang kaagapay lang po namin sa panggagamot is the uh R H U. So ang R H U po is uh Monday to Friday lang po ang ano nila eight to five. Kaya ang number, ang nag-iisa lang po kami hospital na nag-eexist with for twenty-four hours uh para mag- maggamot sa mga tao doon. As of October two thousand twenty-three, ang total bed capacity namin is umaabot na po sa two hundred sixty-four percent. Initially, ang bed capacity namin is ten, pero right now, ang aming inpatient umaabot na po sa fifties. More than fifties uh. Being an infirmary limited lang po ang aming mga services na ma-o-offer. And the next existing first-level hospital around forty-three point six kilometers. So more than, more than an hour travel po.
Madam Chair, uh may I ask Doctor Josie Ann Almarca? Um did I hear it right that this is the only hospital?
Yes, ma'am.
In the municipality uh in the municipality of Bulalakaw, in the entire province?
Yes, po.
In the entire province?
Uh in, in the air Bulalakaw Oriental Mindoro.
Oh, in Bulalakaw Oriental Mindoro. And you are also serving neighboring municipalities?
Yes, po.
That's why your uh your service goes beyond ten or?
More than, more than ten bed.
More than ten beds capacity?
Yes.
Okay. And this hospital is being operated and funded by the provincial government?
Yes.
Yes.
Apo.
Okay. Uh aside from this uh community hospitals, how many more government hospitals are operating in Oriental Mindoro?
We have five po.
There are five?
Yes, po.
Okay. And in this municipality or neighboring municipalities, there are no private hospitals, you were saying?
Sa Bulalakaw commu- sa Bulalakaw, first lang po ang walang private hospitals.
Walang private. Where is the nearest private hospital from Bulalakaw?
Pinamalayan po.
Pinamalayan. How far is that from Bulalakaw?
More than two hours.
More than two hours. Okay. Wow.
Yes. And marami po kaming indigenous people, may mga minorities pa rin po kami, and may mga isla po kaming tawid dagat.
Yes.
Are we good, Doktora?
Yes.
Okay, um we would like to listen to the position of the Department of Health. Uh Mister Glenn Cruz, you are uh recognized again.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll read the highlights of the proposed position paper on House Bill number two seven two three, which increases the bed capacity of Bulalakaw Community Ha- uh Hospital um from ten to fifty beds. Um the Department of Health poses no objection to the increase of bed capacity of the Bulalakaw Community Hospital. And it recommends that it remains under the direct supervision of the uh and control of the Province of Oriental Mindoro. Um the D O H recommends this um in consid- um in consideration of or in compliance with the Executive Order number one three eight series of twenty twenty-one, which provides the full devolution of certain functions in the executive branch to the L G Us. Maintaining the ownership and control of the hospital by the province shall ensure the healthcare provider network can deliver continuous healthcare from primary to tertiary. So the D O H through the MiMaRopa Center for Health Development will continue to support the province, monitor its compliance to uh to standards in accordance with the health facility development plans and local investment plans for health. So we will be respectfully submitting this to the House Committee on Health as soon as uh our Secretary of Health, Doctor Chidora Herbosa signs. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Representative Bolilia.
The uh the D O H is supporting, supporting the bill proposed by Representative O'Malley of Oriental Mindoro. Um do they understand that the section two of the proposed bills uh provides that the amount necessary to carry out the provisions of this act shall be included in the General Appropriations Act, which means they also need funds from the D O H? So by saying you are supporting this bill, do you also mean supporting the funds necessary to carry out the operation of the hospital when it's upgraded to fifty house capac- to fifty beds capacity?
Uh Mister Glenn Cruz, you are, please respond.
Uh thank you, Madam Chair. Um for this question, it means that the Department of Health, of course, through its uh current programs of providing subsidies like the Health Facility Enhancement Program, as well as the, the medical assistance uh for indigents uh and financially incapacitated program will uh will be extended to the concerned community hospitals or hospitals of the L G Us, of course, through the MiMaRopa Center for Health Development. Thank you. Thank you po.
Any additional comments, Representative Bolilia?
I just want to hear from Doctor Josie Ann of if the support that the D O H willing to, willing to give to the community hospital would be enough to operate the hospital.
Uh Doktora Marca?
Into bed, into bed capacity.
Please respond, Doktora Marca.
Uh as of now, in regards to patients, uh free po ang kanilang bills, so zero bill po kami, including the O P D, including the home meds niya. Na po provide po namin. Kaya lang ang magiging problem po namin is demand power. At present po, kasi we only have twelve nurses, six permanent and six casual, and we only have fourteen nursing aides working in the hospital.
That would be a problem. Uh yung ano ba, uh sa pagkakaintindi mo, yung provincial hospital ba, na ano na ba nila, yung fifty-five ang province ba ng Mindore, ano, is it the first class, second class, or third class municipality? Kasi we have a forty-five, fifty-five uh P S limitation. So kahit may pera pa ang provincial government, if you reach the forty-five percent limitation of P S, kahit gusto mo magappoint at kahit may pera provincial government, they cannot fill the vacancies or they cannot uh create positions for the hospitals.
Open naman po sila for the casual position, not for a permanent position at this time.
Casual positions? I understand they're also included in the ano, in the computation of the P S limitation. Only the job orders are not.
Kaya.
So kaya naman?
Kaya.
Ka- kaya naman ng probinsya pa. Hindi pasagad yung P S limitation.
Ang instructful, instruction po sa amin ni GOB is lahat na mag-aapply na medical team i-a-accept as of now.
So kaya naman pala. And then with uh some assistance from the ano, from the, from the D O H, okay naman. Okay, in that, if that's the case, Madam Chair, I move for the approval of House Bill number two seven two three.
Second, Madam Chair.
Okay, we have an uh a motion for the approval of House Bill number two seven two three duly seconded. There being no objection, the motion is approved. Congratulations. We will now move on to the House Bill number four two five three entitled An Act Converting the Laurel Memorial District Hospital in Tanawan City Batangas into a General Hospital to be known as the Laurel Memorial General Hospital, increasing its bed capacity, upgrading its professional healthcare services and facilities, authorizing the increase of medical personnel, and appropriating funds therefore by Representative Maria Teresa Collyantes. And we have Honorable Representative Ray Reyes of the Anakalosukan Partelist to sponsor the bill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, and uh on behalf of Honorable Maria Maria Teresa V. Collyantes of the Third District of Batangas, I uh I wish to sponsor House Bill number four two five three, which is uh the Act Converting the Laurel Memorial District Hospital in Tanawan City Batangas into a General Hospital to now be known as the Laurel Memorial General Hospital, increasing its bed capacity, upgrading the professional healthcare services and facilities, authorizing the increase of medical personnel and appropriating funds therefore. And uh I request that the explanatory note of the House Bill be enrolled as a sponsorship speech. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Congressman Ray Reyes. Um may we now hear from the Department of Health, uh Mister Glenn Cruz for the position of the depart-
Thank you, Madam Chair. So for the proposed position paper on House Bill number four two five three, and converting the Laurel Memorial District Hospital in Tanawan City into a general hospital to be known as the Laurel Memorial General Hospital. Uh the Department of Health poses no objection to the increase of bed capacity and to convert the district hospital into a general hospital. And reme- and it recommends that it remains under the direct supervision and control of the Province of Batangas. Um are we further recommend that the hospital remains under the direct supervision and control of the province in compliance with Executive Order number one three eight series of twenty twenty-one, which provides for the full devolution of the center, the certain functions of the executive branch to the L G Us. Maintaining this ownership and control of the hospital of by the province shall ensure the healthcare provider network of Batangas can deliver continuous healthcare from primary to tertiary care providers. L M D H uh may be upgraded also to level-two hospital to supplement the existing hospital bed caps of the province. And the Batangas Healthcare Provider Network shall be linked to the Apex and Referal Hospitals that deliver specialty care services and expected to be, as expected to be provided to the H C P N. The Apex Hospital that's nearest to uh the Laurel, uh Laurel Memorial District Hospital is Batangas Medical Center, which is a level-three D O H hospital located in Batanga City, approximately forty-five minutes away only from L M D H. So through the Calabarzon Center for Health Development, we will continue to support the province and monitor the compliance to standards um consistent with the health facility development plans and the local investment plan for health. So as soon as signed by our Secretary of Health, Chidora Herbosa, we will be submitting this position paper to the House Committee on Health. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, uh Mister Glenn Cruz. Um may I hear from uh our members for any comments?
I have a few questions, Madam Chair.
Yes, Representative Reyes.
A level of familiarity with the healthcare network in Batangas. Yung Batangas Medical Center, I know is the Apex Hospital of Batangas, but it also serves as the Apex Hospital for Region Four B. Currently, what is the yeah, oh both for four A and four B? Because uh yung mga Tagamindoro, Romblon, some even from Palawan and Maranduke actually go to Batangas Medical Center. What is the current authorized hospital bed capacity of Batangas Medical Center and what is the actual capacity right now? Because anecdotal evidence shows there that sometimes because of the lack of beds, I think the patients are already being attended to in the driveway. So what is the D O H's position with regards to this? And do you have any uh do you have any roadmap on the upgrade of the facilities, given that it actually serves two regions?
Thank you. Um in response to the question, Madam Chair, um I'd like to provide that we don't have the final, we have, we don't have the full details right now, but we will submit it to the uh House Committee as soon as we have them. But uh because uh through also the legislative interventions of uh the Philippine Congress, uh Batangas Medical Center has already been upgraded to further expand over a thousand, a thousand beds, which is currently being implemented now. Um it is also part, and it's also expected to expand further for its specialty care, given that the Philippine Congress um initiative also of passing the Regional Specialty Centers Act has been uh is currently being implemented. And I also recognize that the for MiMaRopa Region or Region Four B, there is actually current intervention or proposals from the House to actually establish a regional hospital for spec- specifically for that region. Thank you, Ma- Madam Chair.
Okay, Madam Chair, thank you. And then uh one last question. I think we had a uh, an open, a forum yesterday where some of the proposals on how to upgrade and uh to cater to the healthcare needs of uh the country was that some of the uh district hospitals or even municipal hospitals that were devolved because of the uh I, I think that was Executive Order one nine eight, is that correct? There was a uh, I think a proposal or a study that at least one of the uh hos- at least one hospital per province is going to be relegated back to the D O H. Because the D O H, given, given their logistic uh logistic capabilities and the scale on how to deploy some of these resources might be in the best position to actually operate these hospitals. What is your take on that?
Uh thank you for the question again. And Madam Chair, to address po um we, we have uh, we have received um the Health Facility Development Bureau, from which I belong, have received that there, there is this ongoing discussions about uh about the about the capacity of the different provinces. And it's already under advi- um advisement from the Office of the Secretary. And we will take note of this and we will, we will follow up uh through the legislative liaison um on the status of these discussions. Thank you.
Thank you. So uh, given that if there is a possibility that it will uh, it will actually uh um start, pwede itong maunan, no?
Thank you po for the follow-up question. We will coordinate nalang properly as soon as we uh as soon as we get through those discussions and we get further advisement on this.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Um anyone else who would like to give their comments regarding the bill?
Madam Chair, I move uh for the approval of House Bill number four two five three.
We have a motion uh for the approval of uh House Bill number four two five three um duly seconded and uh there being no objection uh the motion is approved. Congratulations.
Madam Chair, I have another motion that if uh all other members uh are willing, I would like to move that uh all members present be co-authors of House Bill number four five eight two seven two three three six zero six four two four 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 two five three and four four zero three, which we just approved.
Second, Madam Chair.
Okay, we have a motion uh for uh for all the members present in this meeting to be co-authors of the House Bills that were deliberated this morning for House Bill number four five eight two seven two three, three six zero six, four two four 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 two five three, four four zero three, of course, with the permission of our authors. Uh be made uh co-authors to this bill, um there being no objection. The motion is approved. So we will now proceed to the deliberation on the mental health benefits and services and youth suicide intervention and prevention. So the Republic Act one one zero three six, or the Mental Health Act, was signed into law on June eighteen, two thousand eighteen. Its primary objective is to develop and establish a comprehensive, integrated, effective, and efficient national mental health care system responsive to the psychiatric, neuro- neurologic, and psychosocial needs of um responding to integrate a mental health care in the basic healthcare services. It also uh provides for the rights of service users or people who have lived experience of any mental health condition. Now, five years after its enac- enactment, it is really truly, is it really truly effective? Has it answered depressing problems among Filipinos? Especially our youth, like uh depression and anxiety, which sometimes lead to unexpected loss of lives? Hence, our meeting for today, we shall be discussing seven national bills which provide for additional services and benefits on mental health. We shall be calling on all the authors one by one uh to sponsor their bill, after which we shall be hearing the position of our different uh resource persons. And also, we will be asking uh our House members who would like to give their comments as well to we'll give them ample time to direct their questions to our guests. So um to begin with, um I will be uh we will be tackling on House Bill number four two nine of Representative Neptali Gonzalez, House Bill number two seven eight nine of Representative Patrick Michael Vargas, House Bill number three four two four of Representative Harris Christopher Ong Chuwan, House Bill number three five eight two of Representative Harris Christopher Ong Chuwan, House Bill number four three seven seven of Representative Alfred de La- House Bill Number Four Three Seven Seven of Representative Alfred de Los Santos, House Bill Number Eight Four Seven Zero by Representative Alana Samantha Santos, and House Bill Number Eight 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 Four of Representative Lorden Suwan. We will now, um, have Representative, uh, Deputy Majority Leader Representative Neptali Gonzalez to sponsor House Bill Number Four Two Nine. Um, DML, you are recognized.
Uh, tha- thank you, uh, Madam Chair. And, uh, to all the distinguished members of this committee and esteemed guest, um, ganong magapos, habanin na. Uh, I am honored to sponsor before you this morning, House Bill Number Four Two Nine. And in doing so, allow me to express my gratitude and give credit to Doctor Director Noel B. Reyes of the National Center for Mental Health and his team for, uh, crafting, drafting, and finally coming out with the final version of this bill, which is now due for consideration of this, uh, committee. Uh, epilepsy developmental disabilities, this depression, anxiety, behavioral disorders, and a lot more are in the scope of mental illness among our people. Issues on mental health affects all age groups. But it is more upset, uh, upsetting to see this condition affecting the children and adolescent population. More so because there is limited available support and interventions for them. The rise of mental health issues among children has been increasing for several decades now. Ten percent, according to the World Health Organization, ten percent of children and adolescents experience a mental disorder. And majority of them do not seek help or are not receiving the needed attention. Thus, suicide is the fourth leading cause of death in fifteen to nineteen years old. In the local scene, according to the National Statistics Office, mental health illness rank as the third most common form of morbidity among our countrymen. A prevalence of sixteen percent of mental disorders affects children. With these realities, there are only five government hospitals with psychiatric facilities for children. Eighty-four general hospitals with psychiatric units. Fifty-six outpatient facilities from which only eleven are designed for children and adolescents. Moreover, there are only about sixty child psychiatrists practicing in the Philippines. Majority of them have practice concentrated in the urban areas such as the national capital region. It is correct to say that those in the provinces with mental health problems do not have access to or have less access to support and intervention of this nature. Approximately forty percent of the total Philippine population is comprised of Filipinos below eighteen years old. And according to the WHO report, Filipino children as young as five years old under, until fifteen years old have, have mental health problems. Attempted suicide is prevalent among teens and those in the age bracket of thirteen to fifteen years old. At para lang ho sa kaalaman ho ng, ng komite nito, about less than a month ago, a student from the Rizal Technological, uh, University, whose main campus is in my district. Uh, aged, um, I think is, uh, third, third year high, uh, grade eleven, eleven, uh, committed suicide by jumping from the eighth to eighth floor of the said building. And of course, uh, naapektuhan ho ang, ang mga bata dun, uh, the faculty, and of course, the, the, the community na, from where the, 'yung bata ay naninirahan. The need to address mental health issues among children and teens are never be overemphasized. To fail to address to this will lead to greater consequences as they bring these issues into adulthood, impairing their general health and welfare and limiting their opportunities to lead fulfilling lives as well-balanced individuals. Mental health illness among children are still remediable. Psychotherapy is still among the effective tools for children and youth adults with mental issues. We just need these tools to be accessible to them without the fear of stigma. We have the responsibility to be more responsive to our young population as they are the future, the hope of our tomorrows. While the Mental Health Act was passed in Twenty Eighteen with the objective of improving the delivery of integrated mental health services and promoting and protecting the rights of people who use psycho-social health services, the focus on children were undefined. The fe- the bill facilitates the needed steps towards emphasizing the importance of focused mental health programs and services for children and adolescents. This bill will provide programs and strategies to include mechanisms for promotion and prevention, appropriate response, appropriate response and interventions, and adequate social, psychosocial care and support, focus in children in our communities. The passage of this bill manifests our overall commitment to uphold the welfare and well-being of our children, not just in ensuring that they are educated, but also in safeguarding them for a future and life they can call their own. May I then seek support for this measure to be passed, Madam Chairperson? Thank you, Pa.
Thank you, uh, DML, uh, Neptali Gonzalez. Uh, we will now proceed, uh, before we go through the resource persons, we will continue on with the reading of the house bills. We now have a House Bill Number Two Seven Eight Nine by Representative Patrick Michael Vargas, uh, which will be, uh, sponsored by, uh, DML, uh, Ino Di.
Thank you, uh, Madam Chair. Similarly, House Bill Number Two Seven Eight Nine, uh, filed by Representative Patrick Michael Vargas, uh, aims to address the same problems regarding mental health services and benefits. With that, uh, I request that the explanatory note of, uh, House Bill Number Two Seven Eight Nine be used as a sponsorship speech.
Thank you, DML Ino Di. We will now proceed to House Bill Number Three Four Two Four by Representative Harris Christopher Ong Chuwan. Also will be, uh, sponsored by, uh, DML Ino Di.
Uh, Madam Chair, for the information of, uh, our colleagues and everybody, uh, in this committee here in today, uh, Representative Christopher Ong Chuwan has withdrawn the filing of House Bill Number Three Four Two Four and instead has filed num, House Bill Number Three Five Eight Two in its place. Uh, so with that said, uh, Madam Chair, uh, may I request that the explanatory note of House Bill Number Three Five Eight Two, uh, be used as a sponsorship speech?
Thank you, DML Ino Di, uh, duly noted. Um, now we proceed to House Bill Number Four Three Seven Seven and, uh, by Representative Alfred de Los Santos, which will also be sponsored by DML Ino Di.
Madam Chair, um, we have another similar bill, uh, addressing the same, uh, issue, uh, House Bill Number Four Three Seven Seven, uh, by Representative Alfred de Los Santos. So may we request the Secretariat use his sponsorship or explanatory note as his sponsorship speech?
Um, we will now proceed with House Bill Number Eight Four Seven Zero by Representative Maria Alana Samantha Santos. Representative Ino Di, please.
Uh, Madam Chair, House Bill Number Eight Four Seven Zero by Representative Maria Alana Samantha Santos uh, also intends to, um, address the same issues um, covering mental health services. So may I ask, uh, the Secretariat that, uh, they use this explanatory note of Representative Santos as her sponsorship speech?
Thank you. Um, we will now proceed to the last, uh, bill for this, uh, topic. We have, uh, House Bill Number Eight 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 Four by Representative Lorden Suwan. Congressman Di.
Madam Chair, uh, House Bill Number Eight 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 Four by Representative, uh, Lorden Suwan addresses the same, uh, issue. So again, may I ask his explanatory note be used as his sponsorship speech?
With that, may we now recognize the resource person, um, from the Department of Health, the Development Management Officer Three, who is with the Department of Health Promotion Bureau. We have Doctor Alexander de la Fuente to give his response.
Thank you. Sorry, um.
Doctor, um, we will first, uh, call on, uh, Doctor John Levado for this bill, bill.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Good morning to the members of the committee. Ma'am, I quite have a long, um, position as there are so many bills, um, if I can be given a little bit of time to read the position paper.
Yes, you may proceed.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, the Department of Health allows the noble intent of the aforementioned legislative measures with, which seek to improve the mental health situation in the country through the creation of mental health services and benefits and ensuring its accessibility and suitability to age-specific and special populations, and establishment of mental health centers in every region or province. The Department of Health notes that the bills are already stipulated in the Mental Health Act and its implementing rules and regulations. The proposed measures are among the priorities under the newly enacted Regional Specialty Centers Act, or RA One One Nine Five Nine, the Philippine Council for Mental Health Strategic Framework Twenty Twenty Four, Twenty Twenty Eight, which was just recently launched this October of Twenty Twenty Three, and the Philippine Health Facility Development Plan. Similar efforts are also being done by the Department of Health, the National Center for Mental Health, and other member agencies and institutions of the Philippine Council for Mental Health in pursuit of advancing the mental health and well-being of Filipinos. The DOH recommends that the bills align instead with the direction of existing laws, policies, and initiatives to ensure the gaps in implementation are being addressed efficiently. Further, we propose the following initial recommendations, and we highlight some of the accomplishments to the proposed legislation. In terms of House Bill Number Four Two Nine, one of the strategic goals of the Philippine Council for Mental Health Strategic Framework Twenty Twenty Four to Twenty Twenty Eight is improving the outcomes of persons with mental health conditions, specifically developmental, neurologic, and psychiatric, with the life-stage approach as one of its guiding principles. The strategic framework also indicates health-enabling learning institutions, workplaces, and communities, and intersectoral work as its core processes, among the others identified. Current major interventions that are, that are available for the children and adolescents include the Healthy Learning Institutions Program, access to essential, uh, medicines, to the Medicines Access Program for Mental Health, the national and regional crisis hotlines, and multiple mental health promotion advocacy. Mental health interventions are also being provided in rural health units with MHGAP trained primary healthcare workers and those trained with mental health and psychosocial support. The Omnibus Health Guidelines for Life Stage of the Department of Health provides guidance for healthcare providers on the standards of care at the primary level for different life stages, including children and adolescents. This policy outlines promotion and prevention initiatives, screening and diagnostic tests for children and adolescents, risk factor assessment, and the role of healthcare providers, parents, guardians, and teachers in ensuring the welfare and mental health and well-being of children and adolescents. In terms of House Bill Number Two Seven Eight Nine and Eight Four Seven Zero, the Phil Health recently issued Phil Health Circular Twenty Twenty Three Zero Zero One Eight, an outpatient benefit package for mental health, both for primary care facilities and specialist care, to expand insurance coverage for mental health. We are amenable in the context to conduct a regular review of the current packages to assess if the prevailing rate will complement to the increasing cost of essential medicines and services. Additionally, Republic Act Ten Seven Five Four, otherwise known as an act expanding the benefits and privileges of persons with disabilities, mental health service users may avail of the PWD card where a twenty percent discount is provided in the purchase of goods and services. Compensation benefits for mental health service users for any health condition might be included in the overall benefit of companies. Workers with mental health conditions are already entitled to all monetary and non-monetary statutory benefits in accordance with existing rules and regulations on compensation and other benefits as per the Department of Labor and Employment Department Order Two Zero Eight Series of Twenty Twenty. For House Bill Three Five Eight Two, the Philippine Health Facility Development Plan Twenty Twenty to Twenty Forty, a guide to ensure that local health infrastructure plans are evidence-based, follows a needs-based approach before making investments on health facilities. The department also utilizes a resource stratified framework in the development of health facility standards in accordance with Republic Act Number One One Nine Five Nine, otherwise known as the Regional Specialty Centers Act. As indicated in the proposed bills, the creation of mental health centers in the province entails mapping of resources, both human and infrastructure, from the national and local government units. Creation of infrastructure would also heighten the need for human resources for health, and these infrastructures need to be complemented by standard staffing personnel. As such, the establishment of these mental health centers should be reviewed in accordance and consistent with the Philippine Health Facility Development Plan. Currently, ma'am, we have three hundred sixty-two mental health access sites where we train primary care workers to provide mental health services in almost all rural health units in the country. For House Bill Number Five One Zero Seven and Four Seven Four One, the Disease Prevention and Control Bureau of the Department of Health recommends aligning this measure with the plans of the DOH and agencies overseeing the learning institutions under the Healthy Learning Institutions Initiative, currently being implemented through the Joint Administrative Order by the DOH, DEP Ed, DSWD, CHR, uh, LEB, TESDA, and DILG using the Healthy Learning Institutions Framework. We also proposed to review and develop the curriculum to include mental health-related concepts that also aligns with Section Twenty Four of the IRR of the Mental Health Act, which mandates DEP Ed, CHED, and TESDA to integrate each appropriate mental health content into the curriculum at all educational levels. Hence, we recommend that the proponent collaborate with these national agencies to determine specific needs to fulfill their mandate to integrate mental health in the different levels of the education curriculum. The DOH, through the assistance of the World Health Organization, was able to develop and pretest suicide prevention modules intended for teaching and non-teaching staff, which we pretested earlier this year among select teaching and non-teaching staff in the Cordillera Administrative Region. Development of a national suicide prevention strategy adopting the WHO Live Life Framework is also a priority policy in the next year. For House Bill Four Three Seven Seven, we fully support the intent of the bill for better access to mental health services as stated in Section Four, designating at least one city or municipal health professional posted in the city or municipal health center, emphasizing their role in de-stigmatizing mental health in communities and informing barangay health workers of their roles in providing mental health services at the barangay level. Currently, we have established mental health crisis hotline across the country, managed by the National Center for Mental Health and the Centers for Health Development in the regions, and the Ministry of Health of Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region in Muslim Bin Denaw. The bill should align with the plan of NCMH in consolidating and centralizing mental health crisis hotline with the inclusion of linking these hotlines with the mental health specialty centers. We are one with the bill authors in strengthening the implementation of the Mental Health Act to achieve our shared vision as the DOH fulfills one of its priority, priority action agenda. Respectfully submitted, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Before we uh, before we continue, I would like to uh recognize our Chair, Siriyako Gato Junior of the Lone District of Batanes, as well as our um South Cotabatas of the Second District Honorable Representative Peter Miguel. Thank you for your attendance. To continue, we now would like to recognize the Assistant Secretary, Irene Dum- Dumlaw of the Legislative Affairs and Data Privacy Office.
Good morning, Madam Chair, and to the honorable members of the committee. Good morning as well to other invited guests. Um, the Department of Social Welfare and Development um supports the proposed legislations. Uh, the D S W D views these measures as a crucial component of our responsibility to ensure that the poor, the vulnerable, and the marginalized um can access the necessary services. This is especially important considering the exacerbation of mental health issues among individuals as a result of the pandemic and other crises. As we express our support to these legislative measures, we also take this opportunity to share the following programs, uh activities and projects undertaken by the D S W D in pursuit of the objective of prioritizing mental health services and benefits, which may also be considered in enhancing the proposed bills. First, the D S W D adopts a case management approach in implementing programs to provide comprehensive intervention to its clients. This approach goes beyond financial assistance and it encompasses psychosocial and social care through referrals to relevant agencies and institutions. And in response to the COVID nineteen pandemic and other crises, the D S W D has developed the wireless mental health and psychosocial support services for individuals affected by these circumstances. In addition, the D S W D offers psychosocial support interventions to address the mental health and psychosocial needs of individuals and communities affected by disasters and calamities. One such intervention includes establishing child-friendly spaces in evacuation centers where services such as play and art therapy, psychosocial counseling, and other um activities are provided to alleviate trauma and stress from disasters and other crises. The D S W D is also committed to promoting the well-being of its personnel by valuing, promoting, and protecting the mental health in the workplace. This commitment is manifested in the implementation of the mental health psychosocial support services for D S W D personnel. Further, the D S W D manages centers and residential care facilities, particularly in regions N C R, four B, nine, and eleven, to deliver mental health interventions to abandoned and neglected individuals who require social welfare assistance and social work interventions. This aim to restore their normal psychosocial functioning and facilitate their reintegration into the community. Finally, the D S W D endeavors to continue being a valuable partner in promoting and safeguarding mental health in the Philippines. And to this end, we shall continue to develop and implement programs in collaboration with other government agencies to strengthen service delivery and establish a referral mechanism to ensure appropriate, to ensure that appropriate services are provided to its clients and offering comprehensive and holistic support. Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, uh, Asek, uh, Irene Dumlaw. We will now proceed to um the Chief Health Program Officer of the Department of Education, Ms. Corazon Dumlaw.
Good morning, um, Madam Chair and the other members of the committee and um other guests. The Department of Education respectfully submits its comments and above-mentioned subject bills in response to the request for the House Committee on Health. The proposed bills aim to provide mental health-related benefits to varying sectors of the society, and these benefits include compensation-related benefits, establishment of mental health centers and capacity building, and provision of mental health professionals to municipalities and barangays, among others. In line with this, um, with the Dep Ed's mandate and function, we submit the following comments. As a general rule, we strongly recommend awaiting or taking into consideration the impending passage of the Basic Education Mental Health Act, which is currently await- awaiting by Cameral Conference Committee discussions on the conflicting provisions of Senate Bill number two two zero zero and House Bill number six five seven four. Both bills contain provisions similar to the establishment of mental health dedicated infrastructure and hiring of mental health professionals. We therefore recommend alignment of the proposed bill to prevent conflicting provisions overlapping in functions and commingling of funds. On mental health related compensation and benefits for workers, we respectfully defer to the concerned government agencies such as the Department of Labor and Employment and the Department of Health. On the establishment of mental health centers, we res- concerned agencies regarding the feasibility and possible implementation of such provisions. It uh shall be noted, however, that Dep Ed supports similar proposed provisions in the context of the education sector. Specifically, we support the proposed establishment of care centers in Senate Bill number two two zero zero and the proposed establishment of school-level mental health and well-being office in every school's division in House Bill number six five seven four. We therefore strongly recommend that any proposed establishment of mental health centers, whether on a per-region or per-province basis, be aligned with the above-mentioned the uh bills to prevent any commingling of funds or overlap in functions that may dilute the quality or quantity of mental health services dedicated for learners, which is a subsector of society in need of contextualize and sector-specific services. On the mandating of at least one city or municipal mental health professional, we support this provision as this will be um this will complement our efforts in integrating uh the learner health referral system. We are currently in the process of releasing a Deput order on the policy of school mental health program in which we are strongly pushing for the establishment of the aforementioned referral system. The referral system is envisioned to link learners in need of highly specialized mental health services to a locally available mental health specialist. It would be highly beneficial for learner well-being if municipal health professionals are also those within the menu of services and referrals for learners, given the municipality's possible proximity and reach to schools. On the separation of child and adolescent mental health services from general and adolescent health facilities, we recommend that uh this be reviewed uh and take into consideration the need for a holistic approach in managing child and adolescent health. In the constitution of the World Health Organization, health is defined as a complete physical, mental, and social well-being and not merely the absence of disease or infirmity. The W H O also states that there is no health without mental health. This statement is further interpreted by the Canadian Mental Health Association to contain the following connectivities between mental and physical health. Poor mental health is at risk for, is a risk factor for chronic physical conditions. People with serious mental health conditions are at a high risk for experiencing face chronic physical conditions, and people with chronic physical conditions are at risk for developing poor mental health. In view of such insights, we highly recommend that the treatment of a child or adolescent mental health also take into consideration the child or adolescent overall physical health wherever possible. On the proposed mental health care provider networks, we strongly recommend the integration of educational institutions and Dep Ed regional offices, schools' division offices, and schools in the screening and identification of young people at risk for mental health problems, including suicidal tendencies. Given the proximity of teaching and non-teaching personnel with children and adolescents below the age of eighteen, specifically those currently enrolled in schools, they are in the highly advantageous position to screen, monitor, and observe potential mental health problems. We are also currently exploring capacity building initiatives that will have at least one teaching or non-teaching personnel to conduct internationally accredited screening and identification processes for learners. In view of this, we also recommend that L G U conducted screening and identification initiatives be provided specifically for out-of-school youth at this is, as this is the sector outside the Dep Ed, Dep Ed's mandate. On House Bill number four three seven seven, the Dep Ed support the intent of the bill to increase access to mental health services as stated in section four, designating at least one city or municipal health professional posted in the city or municipal health center. The planned established mental health crisis hotlines across the country should be aligned with the plans of the National Center for Mental Health on consolidating and centralizing mental health crisis hotlines. On the, the House Bill number five one oh seven and four seven four one, we strongly support uh the bill that aims to address the increasing suicide prevention among Philippine youth by instilling life-planning education in elementary and secondary education curriculum, implement a public education campaign, implement peer counseling group programs in schools, and establishment of youth health centers. We acknowledge the urgency of the issues raised and generally support the Youth Suicide Prevention Act. On the establishment of youth health centers, we recommend aligning the services that these centers may provide with that of the impending establishment of mental health dedicated infrastructure in schools. This is to guarantee equality in both quantity and quality of mental health services received by children and adolescents both in a school and outside of it. We also recommend that the youth health centers be contextualized to cater for the out-of-school youth. It is recommended that the efforts be aligned with the strategic plan of the P S M, P C, P C M H and the D O H of uh, uh Department of Health, Health Promotion Bureau under the Healthy Learning Institutions Initiative being implemented through the Joint Administrative Order two zero uh twenty twenty two zero zero one, D O H, Dep Ed, D S W D, CHED, Legal Education Board, T E S T A, D I H, D I L G, Healthy Learning Institutions Framework. The efforts will also support Dep Ed in fulfilling its mandate to integrate mental health in the education curriculum in section twenty-four of the I R R of the Mental Health uh Act. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, uh, Ms. Corazon Dumlaw. May we now uh hear from the Philippine Health Insurance Corporation, Ms. Merla Rose Reyes.
Good morning, honorable members of the House Committee of Health and resource persons and everybody here in this hall. I am Merla Rose Reyes from the Benefits Development and Research Department of Phil Health. Phil Health recognizes the intentions of the filed bills and is one with the Department of Health and the Philippine Council for Mental Health and all mental health advocates in improving access to the needed preventive and curative mental health care. As we have heard from D O H earlier, on October twenty twenty-three, Phil Health launched the Benefits Package covering outpatient general and specialist medical, mental health services. These aim to address economic barriers to mental health treatment and services by covering a range of services provided at initial contact in non-specialized healthcare settings for mental and neurological disorders. These services include assessment, management, and coordinated referrals to other healthcare providers in the health system when necessary. The outpatient benefits packages are implemented on top of the current benefits for mental and behavioral disorders for inpatient admissions and general primary screening, which is part of the routine general medical consultations under the Consulta benefits packages. In addition to this, there is also an existing Phil Health coverage for developmental disabilities in children below eighteen years of age, which is called the Z benefits for children with developmental disabilities implemented in twenty seventeen. This endeavor is part of Phil Health's mandate to provide health coverage to all Filipinos and improve access to quality and affordable healthcare goods and services, ensuring financial risk protection. Phil Health aligns its programs with the strategic goals of the Philippine Council for Mental Health based on the strategic plan for twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-eight, and Phil Health expresses its full support in realizing this plan and taking part in the country's effort to increase financial risk protection for mental health services across all ages and conditions. We heard earlier and we wish to reiterate, there is no health without mental health. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Merla Rose Reyes. May we now hear from the Supervising Medical Specialist of the Social Security Systems, Mr. Dennis Imperial.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Uh, good morning to the honorable members, to the committee members and guests. Um, among the House Bills for Mental Health Services and Benefits up for deliberation, the House Bill two seven eight nine, authored by Representative Vargas, is the one aligned with the mandate of the social security system. The House Bill ensures that the service users in need of mental health care receive adequate compensation benefits should they sustain temporary or permanent mental disability as expressed in section one thereof. At present, uh, for temporary mental disability, S S S provides sickness benefit for active members who are confined at home or in a hospital due to mental or behavioral disorders as compensation for the number of days they are unable to work. They are entitled to cash benefit equivalent to up to one hundred twenty days in a year, and for permanent and chronic mental health conditions, the S S S grants partial permanent or total permanent disability pension. Overall, S S S recognizes and recommends the legislative intentions of subject bills on mental health services and benefits. However, evaluation of subject bills reveals that S S S was not expressly mentioned or adverted to therein. Hence, S S S defers to the expertise of the concerned agencies, local governments, and healthcare institutions in this regard. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dennis Imperial. May we now have a uh, University of the Philippines National Institutes of Health, uh, Doctora Eva Maria Cotionko de la Paz.
Honorable Chair and honorable members of the House Committee on Health, I'm with Doctor Lee Usan and myself, we are from U P Manila and the National Institutes of Health. We um, we are going to provide uh the requested uh positions on the House Bills providing mental health services and benefits as well as later for the youth suicide intervention and prevention. The House Bills being proposed will complement and strengthen the Philippine Mental Health Act of twenty eighteen, which has recognized the important role of mental health professionals protecting their right to participate in mental health planning and development of services and ensuring that they have a safe working environment, access to continuing education, and autonomy in their own practice. In addition, the proposed H B's House Bills will also integrate mental health into the educational system by promoting mental health programs in schools and other organizations. With your permission, uh, Madam Chair, I'd like to turn over the floor to Doctor Josepina Lee Usan, Professor of the Department of Psychiatry and Behavioral Medicine of P G H, for our major comments of the Bills Providing Mental Health Services and Benefits.
Thank you. Uh, Doctor Josepina Usan, you are recognized.
Honorable Chair and honorable members of the House Committee on Health and guests, good morning. In addressing the challenges cited by the W H O, we support the Health Bill um, H eight 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 four and uh H B eight four seven zero as these bills provide for the expansion of Phil Health benefit packages for mental health clients, including outpatient services. Think in the past, it's only been inpatient services that was covered. So, Mental Health Benefits Package in section four of the H B eight 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 four is comprehensive but can be more detailed. Um, items G and I refer to the same psychiatric and psychotropic medications are um referring to the same category of drugs. And due to the varied nature of mental health conditions, there can be a cap on the amount of the financial subsidy allocated. So during the November seventeen twenty twenty-three Phil Health Studies Meeting, it was announced that in twenty twenty-four, the P H I C will augment the existing Consulta package uh for mental conditions, which was mentioned earlier, with a new mental- with a new mental health package to cover primary and specialist care. So, we should study how we can support the optimization of this new upcoming mental health package along with the stated dimensions of HB 884, namely, the cost of consultation, the duration of treatment, the cost of medication, and an annual review of effectiveness and adequacy of benefits. For HB 2789, immediate compensation benefits connot some form of accountability in inducing the mental health condition. So, this may be difficult to establish as causality can be multifactorial. Receiving special financial assistance for the service user may be more generally acceptable for all parties involved so that adequate and timely support is given to the client. So, while we agree with the following provisions of HB 429, creation of a directory of location of access sites for mental health and mandating the role of the council for the welfare of children in Section 4, we recommend that the following sections be revised. In Section 8, which seeks to separate child and adolescent mental health services from general health services, this should be studied more carefully. In general, the trend is to consider mental health as general health and separating them may pose additional hardships to the parents or guardians who may need to make separate trips to the facilities and may promote prejudice among the mental health patients. For Section 10, which seeks to develop an informal community care, this may benefit from the experiences of the Child Protection Unit, the CPU of the Philippine General Hospital, so as to protect not only the children but also any evidence of wrongdoing. For Section 12, which seeks to allow primary care physicians to prescribe psychotropic medications, due to the dearth of mental health professionals, it is incumbent on the primary care physician to be well-trained in prescribing psychotropic medications, at least for common mental health conditions like depression and anxiety. So, the express desire of House Bill 3424 to mandate DOH to establish mental health centers, which was earlier revoked, so this time it will just be in the region or in the province, I think in the province, which laudable may seem less achievable than HB 3582, hence perhaps the changes. Which seeks to establish mental health centers in every region instead as there are currently few qualified psychiatric and psychological caregivers in the Philippines. So, at the same time, the DOH, while maintaining regional health facilities, has more or less turned over all provincial facilities to the provincial governments already. So, for HB 4377, 3582 and 424, which provides for training of barangay health workers in mental health service, so the roles and responsibilities of barangay health workers need to be specified. At the barangay level, financial and technical assistance can be extended to help those in need to access mental health care services. So, mental health professional in each city municipal health center, that was stated in the House Bill, creation of mental health center in each region and also creation of mental health center in each province. So, these centers can provide a wide array of services, which include but are not limited to diagnosis, assessment and management of mental health conditions ranging from mild to moderately severe cases. Wellness and mental health centers or units within hospitals can also initiate activities that promote mental health, like self-care, nutrition, sleep, exercise, et cetera, and annual executive checkups, which are also covered in PHIC. To improve access and delivery of mental health services, we suggest the following revisions to the House Bills. Integrate services in adolescent-friendly health facilities, create networks for referral and involve the community for HB 429. For HB 3424 and 3582, the provisions have to be aligned with the availability of personnel trained in mental health. So, as mentioned, there's a dearth of mental health service providers, so it is important to ensure that there will be adequate human resources to manage these centers. For HB 4377, community-based interventions need more investments, including social workers and medical personnel such as medical doctors, nurses, midwives and their training needs. The reason for this is that the barangay health workers are already overloaded with many assignments, if not trained in delivering mental health services and may not be compensated for current services. So, in addition, information on the availability of major city hotlines is best disseminated in the local language. So, for HB 4741, Sections 5 and 6, the lack of psychologists to run peer counseling and mentor mentee program can be addressed, and there should also be a training assessment of school counselors as they need to acquire a master's degree to be qualified and that their compensation may be quite low. So, here, we aim to promote early recognition and interventions for mental health conditions so that these patients can achieve functional recovery and contribute meaningfully to the society. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Josefina Usan. We may now hear from Attorney Luzo Yu Jr. from the Government Service Insurance System. He is the Assistant Legal Chief Counsel from the Legal Services Group. Attorney, you are recognized.
Good morning, Madam Chairperson and members of the committee. On behalf of our PJM with Beloso, we thank the committee for inviting the GSS to comment on this bill on relating to mental health. A review of the bills makes no mention about GSS, however, we just want to manifest that we fully support the purpose and intention of the bill. And of course, as far as benefits is concerned, the GSS as a social institution extends benefits to mental illness and other illnesses through the ECC, the Employees Compensation Commission, and of course, our GSS fund. And depending on the examination, we continue to extend benefits to mental health illnesses. Primarily, especially if the mental illness will affect the ability or capacity to work. And we still grant those benefits.
Thank you, Attorney. Thank you so much. Now, lastly, may we hear from the Department of Budget and Management, Ms. Julia Domingiano.
Good morning. Good morning, Madam Chair and to the honorable members of this committee at sa lahat po ng present dito. Maraming salamat po sa pagimbata sa Department of Budget and Management to this meeting. As there are numerous bills referred to the DBM for comments, we have not yet prepared the official position paper, Madam Chair. We recognize the intention of the bills and initially po, we defer to the agencies concerned as to the proposals in the legislative measures as there is a need to determine that the proposals under the bills are consistent with the policies, standards, guidelines and criteria for the purpose. May we note, Madam Chair, the recently enacted Republic Act 11959, an act establishing specialty centers in the Department of Health in every region and in government-owned and controlled corporation specialty hospitals. Mental health services is among the programs to be implemented by the hospitals, by the Department of Health and the GOC specialty hospitals. We just would like to mention that should there be a need for additional funds for the implementation of the mental health program, the agencies concerned should include in their budget proposals the funds, funding requirement for the implementation of the of the mental health program and the inclusion of which in the General Appropriations Act would be evaluated based on the criteria, parameters and priorities for the budget year and of course, for the authorization of Congress. Yun lang po Madam Chair and salamat po uli.
Thank you so much. After hearing all the positions of the different resource persons, we may now open the deliberation with our House members. You may now direct your questions to our resource persons. Yes, Representative Congressman Ron Salo, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. At the outset, allow me to express my commendation to all the authors for championing the cause for ensuring the mental health for people. Allow me first to mention, Madam Chair, as has always been mentioned also by our resource persons, the enactment of Republic Act 11036 or the Mental Health Act. And we note that this particular law, in which I was one of the main authors of this previously, was just, it's just five years from now. But I suppose within this particular five years, makikita na po natin kung kumusta po kaya 'yung implementation. So, with that, Madam Chair, I wish to hear from the Department of Health as well as the National Council for Mental Health. How is it this particular law being implemented? And what exactly are the gaps that we need to address? And for one, for example, sa Department of Education, binabanggit po kanina, but I note in this particular law, malinaw na rin po rito 'yung mandate po nila to come up with and to integrate mental health concerns in the curriculum. So, kaya ang tatanung ko, 'yung Philippine Council for Mental Health and the Department of Health, how exactly is this particular law being implemented? Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If I can respond then?
Yes, you may.
Actually, we have prepared the slide for the accomplishments of the mental health law and the slide for the new strategic framework, but if if it's too much time to get from the committee.
Baka, Madam Chair, ang binabanggit po ni Chair dito, baka pwedeng maigsi lang, inanat siya lang. Then perhaps we can request copy of that particular presentation. And susun po dito sa binabanggit ko po ma'am, Chair, Madam Chair. Kasi, naririnig ko po kanina ko ay Dr. Usan, 'yung lack of human resources. So, napakaganda 'yung hikain po natin, objective po natin to establish mental health in all regions, in all LGUs. But the question is, do we have the appropriate personnel? Do we have the appropriate human resources to really cater to this particular centers that we wish to establish?
So, in particular, sir, for the human resources, that's why our trust in the Department of Health is really community-based mental health because we don't want our service users really to be institutionalized. For example, in the National Center for Mental Health, ang dami na pong pasyente ni Dr. Noel Don. So, we really wanted our service users, that's what we call our mental health patients or persons with lived experience to be productive members of the community. So, our number one, what we're doing in the Department of Health is to capacitate our primary care providers, those in the rural health units in our city health offices to be able to provide mental health services. So, one of our core trainings is the MH gap. So, basically, we're training our primary care providers to provide mental health services and mental health therapeutics to our service users. So, currently in the Philippines, officially, we have 362 access sites all over the country. We can submit, Madam Chair, for all the sites that we have to the committee. But for 2024, we are actually expanding to 700 sites all over the country. So, that's community-based mental health. Now, we are also pilot testing the problem management plus, it's like a cognitive behavioral therapy for primary care providers because hindi naman po lahat ng service users ay nangangailangan ng gamot. So, this is actually one of the core interventions of the Department of Health to answer human resource challenges for mental health. In total, sir, in the country, we have only 651 psychiatrists. We have 200 psychologists all over the Philippines, so sobrang kulang po talaga, not to mention speech therapists, occupational therapists, physical therapists for our children who have developmental disorders. So, one of our core intervention is really task shifting. So, that's for now, sir. But in the long term, we really have to build the human resource capacity and increase the number of human resources in the Philippines in terms of mental health professionals.
Thank you so much. Are you satisfied, Congressman Salo?
Yes, ma'am. But basically, 'yung binabanggit po ni Dr. Libado, limited po dun sa human resources, but I really wish to see what exactly 'yung assessment dun sa implementation po ng batas. Because I note that this particular law has a lot of provisions in it, including the roles of various agencies of the government, which are specifically identified there. I'm just wondering whether this agency is being identified, this particular law, or really doing your job? And 'yung next question po ma'am, where exactly are the gaps? Kasi at the end of the day, ang concern ko, binabanggit po natin dito, we come up with another law. Pero, another law, when we have already a law, another question is, is it being implemented?
Sige, sir, just to summarize all the accomplishments and later the gaps of the Mental Health Act. So, let me present the Mental Health Act in the specific objectives that it was presented in the law. So, in terms of leadership and governance for health, well, number one, we have established the Philippine Council for Mental Health. That's basically the policymaking advisory body to the Department of Health. So, Dr. Ed is one of the members of the Philippine Council for Mental Health in the from the professional sector. We have also DEEPED as one of the national government agencies, DSWD. We have also DILG and the other national government agencies as part of the council. We have updated our mental health strategic plan. So, we have the 2090 to 2023, and now we have developed 2024 to 2028, which basically focuses on promotion of mental health and well-being of all Filipinos, reduction of suicide risk and integration of substance abuse with mental health implementation. We also developed leadership capacity building design for governors, basically for our local chief executives to be mental health advocates in the country. This is one part of our mental health literacy promotion because hindi po mababawasan ng stigma and discrimination without having champions in our local government units. We will be implementing the leadership capacity building for our local chief executives in the next year, sir. In terms of the national mental health care system, in the communities, as I have said earlier, we have established our medicines access program for mental health. But that's just one side of the therapeutics part. So, we're developing the cognitive-based therapy. But just to note, these are all for psychiatric interventions and neurologic interventions for now. One gap, sir, is that nahihirapan po talaga kami in terms of developmental conditions because it involves, of course, all of the MN's conditions involve a multi-sectoral approach. But in terms of developmental interventions, kailangan po ng multidisciplinary team. We have the speech therapist, occupational therapists, and we only have a handful in the country already. So, we have also developed our Omnibus Health Guidelines. Basically, it's a life-stage approach na nakalagay po dun 'yung mga screening tools natin and interventions for each life stage of an individual. The Philhealth currently launched the Mental Health Benefit Package in support of our community-based mental health interventions. So, they are reimbursing expenses and paying to our primary care facilities. That's number one. And there's another package, paying outpatient specialists' care. So, 'yung mga kailangan po nating i-refer to specialty mental health institutions, they're also paying for that already. And good to note that the medicines are not included in the actuarial computation of the Philhealth. So, basically, we're still, the DOH is still providing the medicines. But Philhealth is not paying for the medicine since it's already paid for by the Department of Health. In terms of the objective of ensuring the rights and freedoms of persons with mental health needs, the Health Promotions Bureau developed the Guidelines on Ethical Portrayal of Suicide in Media. So, they have undergone a training of media practitioners. Dr. Allen can expound on this. We have also developed informed consent for adults. In the next year, we will be developing informed consent for children as well. We have institutionalized internal review boards. So, in the law, sir, it's mandated for all health facilities to establish internal review boards. So, this review board ensures that our rights and freedom of service users is really, you know, upheld by the professionals. So, hindi na po natin dapat tatanggapin na nakarehas 'yung mga service users or there should be guidelines in putting, what do you call that, Dr. Ed? Yeah, 'yung mga gapos mo, 'yung tawag nun. We have trainings for quality, right? Um, we have, um, trainings for quality rights. Because, um, actually, this is an online platform that everybody can take. So, this is part of improving our mental health literacy in the country. In terms of information system, isa po ito, sir, sa gap namin. Because we know that in the Philippines, even in the health sector, we have, um, uh, for lack of a better term, um, uh, non, not integrated information system. So, without data, without information system, we don't know if we're doing good or bad in terms of mental health and well-being implementation. Well, the, uh, National Center for Mental Health is already on the, on its phase two of developing the information system and consolidating the information system in the country. We still need additional support to them. Because they're also managing the National Center for Mental Health Crisis Hotline, and they are also providing support to our other crisis hotline all over the country. They are the ones providing training for our, um, responders. Uh, we have another crisis hotline in the Visayas, the Vicente Soto Tawag Paglaom, and I think we have another one in Mindanao. Um, we have also started to pilot test suicide surveillance in hospitals. We started in hospitals, um, because, um, emergency dinadala sa hospital. But ideally po, we should be establishing this in all, um, healthcare facilities.
Ma'am, thank you very much, Doctor. Uh, Madam Chair, I just have two primary concerns. Section eighteen provides here that psychiatric, psychosocial, neurologic services in regional, provincial, and tertiary hospitals should be included in the service being provided by all these, uh, hospital facilities. And also, I note that section twenty-three, the integration of mental health into the education system in which the Department of Education is here. So, I'm wondering, in these two particular items, how is it being implemented?
Sir, can I give the floor to Deputy? Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Um, Madam Chair, um, with the, the implementation of the Healthy Learning Institutions Framework, which is, uh, uh, part of, uh, the commitment to, uh, uh, provide the, an integrated and comprehensive, uh, services for, uh, learners in the school setting. We are in coordination with the Department of Health for the implementation of the, uh, Joint Administrative Order, each, uh, Healthy Learning Institution with, uh, not only with, um, um, DOH, but it's with, uh, DSWD for the daycare, and then, um, uh, CHED, uh, Test Legal Education Board, and DILG. Uh, the, uh, the concepts, the content for the concepts that needs to be integrated in the curriculum, we coordinate with them for the content as there's a need for age-appropriate.
Makiki, singit lang po. So, ibig sabihin po ba, as of the moment, wala pa po kayong na-integrate?
Meron na po, meron na po, naka-integrate sa curriculum, nag, uh, mapping na rin po. But, of course, uh, may mga, uh, may, meron kasing mga content that needs to, uh, be integ, uh, kung hindi man siya kayang integrate dahil 'yung curriculum, hindi niya kakayanin. Uh, one of the, um, provisions din sa Mental Health Care Act is the promotional activities. So, magkarecreate ng awareness, uh, for, uh, the different, um, age groups. So, 'yung ating, uh, um, age-appropriate, uh, uh, health promotion activities, we are ill, we are also in coordination. So, we conduct, uh, the peer-to-peer, uh, uh, health, uh, promotion. Uh, the, you, we utilize, uh, the different online platforms, and we also utilize the youth clubs for, uh, health promotion activities po.
Follow-up question, Madam Chair. So specifically, anong grade pumapasok po 'yung discussion on mental health?
Ang mental health po kasi, um, napaka-wide po ng spectrum. Ang pinag-uusapan lang or ang very, uh, uh, 'yung usual thinking po ay, 'yung mga meron na talagang mga signs and symptoms. Pero alam natin na there are three targets pagdating sa mental health. 'Yung universal target, 'yung, um, well, they, they are well, wala pa silang any signs and symptoms. But then there's also this, uh, um, group.
Ma'am, specifically ma'am, saan pong grade level pumapasok 'yung discussion?
Uh, sa, sa, as early po as grade one, 'yung taking care of, uh, themselves, nadidiscuss na po yun. Uh, 'yung identification ng, uh, different parts of the body, uh, self-awareness, nadidiscuss na po yun. So, iba-iba po ang integration niya sa different levels po.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, last, 'yung tanong ko po kanina, when it comes to the various, uh, types of hospitals, kumusta po ba 'yung implementation?
Sir, we have actually developed our resource ratified framework. So, basically, it defines, um, what a level-one facility should deliver for mental health services, level-two and level-three. Um, in terms of the specialty centers, sir, we have, I think, nine advanced comprehensive center for mental health and thirteen comprehensive centers for, uh, advan, uh, basic comprehensive centers for mental health. So, this is actually being implemented with, um, RA on specialty centers.
So, uh, clarification lang po, because it mentions here, all regional, provincial, and tertiary hospitals, including private hospitals rendering service to paying patients, shall include the following psyche, psychiatric, psychosocial, neurologic services. So, I'm just wondering, dun sa lahat ng mabinanggitan, it's the whole universe. So, what is the percentage that we are be implementing these particular services?
Uh, Madam Chair, if we can submit, uh, for now, sir, we have the public sector, but we can submit the total universe, sir, uh, which I just have, don't have the data right now.
Thank you very much, Madam, uh, Chair, Madam Chair. And, of course, ang last question po dun, ano ba 'yung gap exactly that we need to address, uh, through legislation? Kasi 'yung binabanggit po niyo kanina, when it comes to field health packages, we don't need a law for that. Nandyan na po yan. 'Yung binabanggit po niyo kanina for inclusion in the curriculum, nandun na rin po sa batas. So, I'm just wondering now, uh, what exactly are those gaps that we need to address through legislation?
Um, well, number one, sir, 'yung pinakamalaking gap talaga natin is human resources. Um, it's a fact. Um, I, I don't know what type of.
Yes, ma'am, but addressing human resources, kailangan po ba natin ng batas dun? Because finally, I suppose that would require only a program, program within the Department of Health.
Yes.
Di ba, in coordination with our academic institutions?
Yes. Actually, sir, in the Basic Education Bill. Yeah, Basic Education Bill, there's already a proposal for human resources already. So, but if, in terms of gaps, sir, that's one of the gap. But I think it's, not legislation is the sole, uh, mechanism to address that.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Representative Salo. Uh, may we now recognize Representative Raoul Daniel Manuel for his comments?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Madam Chair, I would like to, uh, take this, uh, opportunity to manifest my, uh, support to this committee for hearing these pieces of legislation concerning the accessibility of, uh, mental health services, including children and adolescents, and for us to work on existing gaps while we have the mental health law. I believe that actions on the intent of these measures can be positive developments for us to resolve the mental health crisis plaguing our youth. In our consultations with student organizations advocating for mental health, as well as local community youth organizations and the Philippine Psychiatrists Association, uh, we were able to underscore that the mental health crisis is driven by a number of factors outside of, uh, physiological wellness. We recognize that economic and socio-cultural barriers to mental health services are one of the most pressing issues to be addressed in order for mental health services to be truly accessible. For example, Madam Chair, inflation and the lack of living wage have contributed to the mental burden of workers. On the part of students, heavier workloads nowadays, and repressive school policies, among others, have pushed several students to depression, anxiety, and sometimes suicide. Poverty, both in rural areas and in urban centers, forces people to put their survival first on a daily basis, making them less able to give due regard to their mental wellness. That said, Madam Chair, we recognize and, uh, we commend the steps taken by this committee, and we enjoin all advocates to, uh, solve the mental health crisis through a holistic and systemic change that encompasses all aspects of wellness and leaves no contributing or underlying factor untouched. Uh, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Representative, uh, Manuel. Yes, uh, DML, Alianda.
Yeah, Madam Chair. Uh, I am also in support of, uh, these bills. But, uh, I would like to ask first from the DOH because, uh, the National Health Men, National Mental Health Act, uh, was fast five years ago, if I'm correct, five years ago. And you mentioned about the many interventions you've made. But still, uh, in the twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one, uh, data from the WHO, uh, result, two point five out of one hundred Filipinos are suffering mental health. So, what I am trying to ask now is, how impactful are the interventions that you've made? We may pass as many bills as, as necessary to address this, but there must be some assessment on the effectiveness of the interventions that you are making. Because, uh, we can have the, we may have these bills, pero, and then we are proposing, uh, some bills more. Pero, ang gusto ko munang malaman, tinitingnan ba natin kung epektibo? Kasi ko, parang, 'yung suicide is still the fourth largest cost of death. So, we may look at the interventions that we are making, effective ba ito? And how much budget do we foot on this? And let's check the cost-effectiveness. I mean, if we are putting hun, uh, uh, one billion here, do we get, uh, one billion in return na ano, na result? I mean, we are after the result. We make, we do bills here, you do the implementation, you make interventions. But how effective are this? I know that the impact evaluation on programs and projects, of course, are, uh, quite, uh, costly. But I think it is more costly if we continue to implement programs which are not effective at all. Correct? So, let's see. Uh, tingnan natin, balikan natin, 'yung mga ginagawa ng interventions, na ibaba ang cases ng suicide attempts or, uh, uh, the, uh, number or data on depressions after the, after we implemented the National Mental Health Act. Kasi kung wala, kung walang pagbabago, if it remains the same, ibig sabihin, the, the interventions that we are implementing are not effective at all and might as well consider other interventions. Hindi ba? Kasi, year in, year out, we allocate some amount, some peso amount on these programs. Pero, kung nakikita natin, if we are, if we are assessing, if we are making assessment of the programs, at nakikita natin na hindi pala effective ito, then we might try other intervention, not necessarily by providing new bills. Because every bill needs appropriation, when we already have existing appropriations for the National Mental Health Act. So, do you, uh, my question is, do you do some impact evaluation on this? I mean, every program should be evaluated, should be assessed. If, uh, if we don't have, um, data scientist in the, in the DOH who are professionals in making, in doing the impact evaluation, then we might as well hire some professionals who can do, uh, effective impact evaluation. Because, uh, this involves scientific, uh, I mean, impact evaluation involves scientific approach. It cannot be just, oh, uh, may pitong libong tumawag sa National Mental Health, tumihingi ng tulong, o successful 'yung ating program. Hindi ganon, di ba? Ang hindi natin ang binibilang, 'yung numero ng tumawag. And then, kung may pitong libong tumawag, ilan ba may depression? Kung ang may depression sa bansa, isang milyon na tumawag, pitong libo, then we are not effective at all. Di ba? Parang, it's not cost-effective. Kasi konti lang 'yung naririnig natin. You were saying na kulang tayo sa, pagdating sa information, ano, may problema tayo, the information system. I think that's the biggest problem, because not all the people, not all those who are suffering from depression or from anxiety, uh, are aware of this, uh, ano, are aware, are aware of these services, especially those in the remote areas. I, in my district, I have experiences, I've been to many weeks of, of, uh, teens who, um, committed suicide and never had intervention at all. So, yun lang po 'yung tanong ko sa DOH. In every program, specifically on this, because this is the subject of the discussion now, tayo ba may ginigawang impact evaluation? Nababago ba 'yung rates, the suicide rates sa bansa, after na mag-implement na, tayo na mga ganitong programs?
Um, yes, uh, we would like to hear the response of, uh, Dr. John.
Yes, thank you, uh, Madam Chair. And ma'am, I agree with you. In fact, in our recently conducted National Mental Health Survey and Well-being in twenty twenty-one, fourteen in one hundred Filipino adults, um, of has mental health conditions. And then, in our recently conducted, um, YAFs, uh, Young Adult Fertility and Sexuality Study, um, seventeen percent of those surveyed, um, have mental health conditions. So, um, it actually increased among youths, especially during the COVID nineteen pandemic. But, um, let me, uh, just note, ma'am, that in the budget of the Department of Health, a large, a chunk of our budget is really dedicated to mental health commodities. So, um, the Houses of Congress gave us in twenty twenty-three, one point eighty-six, allotted in twenty twenty-three, one point eighty-six billion pesos just for medicines. But we must also understand that in the, in the phenomenon of mental health neurologic conditions, it's not just, um, direct treatment, but we also wanted to address social determinants of mental health. So, I agree with the, uh, good congressman that, you know, um, the triggers for mental health conditions are really, you know, poverty, do not have jobs, cannot go to school. So, all the other social determinants of health must also needs to be addressed. Because, you know, ominous conditions are chronic in nature. So, even though we give them medicines and cognitive behavioral therapy for so long as we wanted, once they have triggers, then, um, you know, acute crisis will, will still ensue. So, so for your question, ma'am, I agree with the impact evaluation. For our core training for mental health, we will be having our evaluation for MH gap and our psychosocial training next year for twenty twenty-four. We have allotted, um, money for that, because it, it has been five years since implementation. Uh, we just recently, recently conducted the survey for national mental health and well-being. But for the other gaps, I think the social determinants of health should also be addressed, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Um, for, do we have other congressmen who would like to, oh, yes, uh, Doctor?
Chair, just on Chair.
Yes, uh, Chairman Gato.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I'd like to manifest my support for all the bills. But before we approve the consolidation of the bill, I'd like to, to, uh, manifest that, yes, we do, I do agree with, uh, intention of the bill to make, um, mental health services accessible, more accessible. And, um, and there's already an existing law that is supposed to address the issues, um, concerning the mental health, uh, uh, problem in the Philippines. However, um, I think you mentioned one of the gaps is, uh, the, uh, the lack of, um, mental health professional. And I think this is a very important gap. Kulang na kulang ang psychiatrist. I think ang pinaka pillar ng management ng mental health disorder ay nakasalalay pa rin sa mga psychiatrists. And I think I heard earlier that there are only six hundred, six hundred-plus psychiatrists. We have eighty-one-plus provinces, we have one thousand four hundred-plus municipalities. And if I may ask, how many percent of these psychiatrists are in Metro Manila? And how many percent are in the countryside? Yes, so, more than fifty percent are in Metro Manila. So, even if we, as you mentioned, Doctor John, we capacitate. When you mean capacitate, ano yan, tinuturuan 'yung mga non-psychiatrists to handle, to manage. Pero, siyempre, kahit kami, mga non-psychiatrist doctors, kailangan pa rin namin ang magkoconsult sa mga psychat, psychiatrists before we manage. Humihingi pa rin kami ng advice from the psychiatrists. Ultimately, it's the psychiatrists who diagnose, who makes the final diagnosis. At nakasalalay sa advice ng psychiatrists, kung anong gagawin ang say, general practitioner, nurses, psychologists, and other uh, members of the, the team. So ang question ko, meron ba ang programa ang Department of Health or the Philippine Mental Health Association or the Philippine Council for Mental Health in increasing the number of psychiatrists in the Philippines? Or maybe increasing, may I, before, may I ask the question? How many training, accredited training institutions are there for psychiatrists? Government or private? And I, I, I'm sure most of them are in Metro Manila.
They're all over the country, sir. At least all island groups are represented. Uh,
Is there a residency training program in psychiatry in Region Two?
In Region Two?
In Togegarao?
Ang nearest po sa ano na, sa
Or Yanu Marcos is in Region One. So Region Two, wala.
Wala, sir.
Yun nga eh. So ang problema talaga is really addressing the lack or inadequate supply of psychiatrists in the Philippines. So meron ba tayong programa uh, na para dumami ang mga psychiatrists na pwedeng uh, lapitan ng mga ibang doctor or mga other members of the team?
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, Ma- Madam Chair.
Yes, Doctor.
Also the Philippine Psychiatric Association. Um, there are, as, as we speak right now, um, more areas where we are establishing training institutions. So that's one response. But the second response, let's not forget, allowed us during the pandemic to use disruptive technology, which is telepsychiatry, to reach the whole country. So psychiatrists, although they might be based in Imperial Manila, uh, they serve patients all over, including OFWs. So that has in fact been a temporary solution, which we are embracing amongst psychiatrists to um, address. The third uh, solution, as was already mentioned, is really to go around and practically all the regions have had training on M, M H gap. Um, to capacitate all the way until barangay uh, health workers from in identifying the major psychiatric conditions as well as through the MAP program, providing uh, medications for these uh, patients.
How many psychiatrists are, I mean, how many psychiatrists finish the residency every year?
Siguro, sir.
Ten, twenty?
About thirty, sir.
Thirty?
Yes, sir.
Every year?
Under ideal conditions. Kung lahat ho po masa sa diploma board exams, under ideal conditions.
And if I may ask, how uh, how effective is telemedicine in uh, in uh, evaluating uh, a patient?
There are studies po, uh, because in the American setting, American Psychiatric Association, they've had telepsychiatrists since nineteen fifty-nine. So this is well studied and the data shows that for most uh, parameters, uh, detection, uh, 'yung, 'yung, actually, maganda rin 'yung, 'yung convenience on the part of the patient, et cetera, et cetera. On a lot of parameters, it's either better or just the same as face-to-face. And this is well studied in uh, based on the A P A studies.
Okay, because if I remember right, mas maganda kasi ma-observe ang demeanor, pag-face-to-face.
May advantage pa rin po, sir. Nakikita niyo 'yung surrounding, 'yung kung saan siya talaga nakatira. Ano 'yung, ano, and sometimes family members join in, kung okay sa, sa patient. Kung hindi naman okay, sa pas- sa loob ng kotse o outside namin sila nakakuusap. Salamat po. Yes, sir. Yes.
Yes, we would like to recognize Representative Peter Miguel for his uh, comments.
Salamat po, Madam Chair. Uh, I would like to direct my question to the implementers of Mental He- Health Act. Hmm, to my observation, in spite of the law at hand, marami pa rin bills being proposed. So it means something na hindi talaga natutugunan. Yan, it present to us a, something, a dramatic innovative program that could change the, the way uh, mental health crisis is happening now. Meron ba tayong naiisip na bago? Kasi kung, as the way you enumerated kanina, dun na lahat ng support. I've heard you have, you've spent one point four billion just for the medicines. Pero, tanong ko, paano niyo ito po nadidispend? How can it go to the level of barangay, situ? Still, uh, as a representative, a, a far-flung district in South Cotabato. To my estimation, hindi pa rin po nararamdaman 'yung programa. Kaya ako'y po ngayon, gusto ko lang ma-enlighten kung ano po 'yung bagong pwede nating gawin na maibsan natin 'yung problema talagang clear and present. It's really happening, the, the mental health issue amongst uh, students, pupils. Doc, may I hear your opinion on this?
Um, Madam Chair, if I may respond, um, actually, sir, for the medicines, it's correct. Uh, one point eighty-six billion, sir, for twenty twenty-three. But uh, we must also recognize that in the past years, access to medicines have been really difficult. So we responded to that need. So ngayon, ang need is really um, complementing the medicines, because not all need med- uh, needs medicines. So we have developed um, cognitive behavioral therapy that is not necessarily psychiatrists can deliver, but actual, even general practitioners, even nurses in the rural health facility. So that's one of the new interventions. In Cotabato, uh, Madam Chair, um, our good congressman, we have uh, I think seven access sites po in Cotabato with mental health medicines. In South Cotabato, we have a General Santos City, C eight, R H U Lagaw. Uh, we have San Isidro in General's uh, Santos, General Santos City Hospital. We also have I P H O Cotabato. And we have uh, in North Cotabato, Field Health Office, Special Geographic Area. So um, this, these uh, areas, Madam Chair, provide um, medicines for our service users and they will als- they are also trained for mental health and psychosocial support. And in the next year, we will be training them in our new interventions for primary care providers. Thank you, Madam.
Madam Chair, now I understand that my assessment is right. Why? If I would like to explain to you, the Lagaw Clinic is in General Santos City. It's not part of South Cotabato. And the San Isidro also is part of General Santos City. And the P H O of North Cotabato, it's another hundred miles away from South Cotabato. And the P H, in Cotabato City, it's another hundred miles away from South Cotabato. So that's that's, that's the reality. Hmm, still need uh, lots of centers. In fact, I think uh, the most dramatic thing we should do is to strategize how can we provide mental access to medicines, to providers in every L G Us or probably in every province, to say the least. South Cotabato is part of Region Twelve. If, if we're going to enumerate these areas here, these access areas, access sites, is just one-third of the entire region. The region for the record is composed of Sultan Kudarat, Province of Sultan Kudarat, Province of Sarangani, Province of South Cotabato, Province of North Cotabato, and Cities of General Santos City, Coratal City, Tacorong City, Uta Paoan City. So that's how, numerous municipalities. So it's a very daunting task. In fact, if we're going to realize now how this access, how this service can be accessed by our patients. So ganun po ang realidad. I think there must be a realigning of programs, appropriately, um, innovation, some innovations should put in place for us to address, really. So doon ko nakikita ngayon po. Well, anyway, we s- we have a lot of things to do under that issue. I'd like to go, Madam Chair, direct my question now to uh, field health. I'd like to thank first the D O H for answering the question, at least you know now how, how big is our problem. And um, yes, I've read a, last October twelve, there is a, a a uh, publication from Manila Bulletin wherein D O H introduces Field Health Mental Health Benefit Package. So uh, I'd like to ask, probably D O H as well as field health, kung ano po to maavail exactly ng ating pasyente? Uh, what is the simple mechanism? Ma'am, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I may answer the question. Before a patient avails of the package, kailangan po, um, hanapin po kung saan 'yung accredited health facility. So there are two packages po. First is the men- General Mental Health Service Package, which is equivalent to the Primary Care Benefit Package or yun po community-based na sinasabi natin earlier. And then we have the Specialty Mental Health Services. Right now, we are in the process of engaging health facilities. We have accreditation standards in place. And currently po, we are processing the accreditation of National Center for Mental Health as a provider for the Specialist Mental Health Care Package. For the General Services po, we have been invited to uh, give orientations to L G Us. So so far, yes, on C T N Manila po, ang nag-request pa lang ng orientation. And we are um, waiting for the feedback from our regional counterparts. Kung meron na rin po silang na scout na prospective providers for the General Service uh, for mental health. And we also requested a list from the D O H of the M H gap-trained healthcare providers so that we can maximize engaging health facilities nationwide, sir.
Thank you for that information. So you are just in the be- part, beginning stage of this program? So still trying to accredit institutions? Pwede po malaman, ano minimum requirements for a uh, certain clinic to be a accredited service provider?
Uh, there are two types of service providers. One is for the General Mental Health Service. So they have to have a fill-out accreditation. We have list of mandatory services that they need to uh, provide. And for example po, um, they need to have laboratory, laboratory services like C B C with platelet analysis, F P S lipid profile, and creatinine. And for radiology diagnostics, they have to have chest X-ray. And for the structure po, there should be a clean consultation and examination area with designated room for consultation with minimal sound transmission. They should have hand-washing sink with soap and water. And some supplies po like alcohol uh, and other equipment needed po. Um, mga um, requirements po like stethoscope and lights, piggo, and emergency medicines plus medications. And for the human resource, there should be a primary care physician and a mental health nurse trained on M H gap. So for the Specialty Mental Health Service, again, the facility should have updated fill-out accreditation, clean consultation and examination area with enclosed room that respects the privacy of patients with hand-washing sink and the usual unagamit ng doctors, the stethoscope and the piggo manometer with emergency kit, um, the medications under the um, Mental Health Medicine Access Program. For the human resource, there should be a psychiatrist, neurologist, psychologist, mental health nurse, trained, all trained on M H gap. And laboratory, for the laboratory po, we have the basic plus mga specialty labs po like uh, thyroid functions, uh, pregnancy tests, anti-thyroid antibodies, or uh, et cetera. And for the radiology diagnostics, apart from the X-ray, there should be CT scan and, or M R I, electron zoophalogram, and E C G. And for the services po, both should be able to provide psychotherapy, psychoeducation. And um, if, if there's an available occupational therapist and speech therapist, that would be an ad- of an advantage po.
Um, so yung medyo hospital-based na tong specialty. It means?
Yes, sir. That's for Level Two and Level Three hospitals.
Preto na to eh. May neurologist ka pa. If there's no neu- psychiatrists, only neurologists, hindi siya ma-accredit?
Um, there could be a visiting neurologist, sir, kung wala naman pong resident neurologist.
Or if there's neurologist, there's no psychiatrist, ganun din kila may visiting?
Uh, at least visiting, sir.
Hmm, then uh, this, for the primary care, any private uh, clinics or multi-specialty uh, clinics, pwede tong uh, General Mental Health Service na accreditation?
Pwede, sir, as long as they comply with accreditation standards.
So mangyari, parang consulta package dito, that uh, once you accredit a certain clinic or hospital, they will enroll mental health patients? Ganun ba?
Ang consulta package, sir, is more of general services. Uh, this po is uh, basic for mental health services. Pero the setups, uh, somewhat similar to consulta package.
Uh, so the patients will come in, do the treated, then may nine thousand, says here, there's nine thousand pesos?
Ah, yes, po, the patient?
Where would the money goes? To the patient, to the doctor, to the?
Facility accredited po.
About the sixteen thousand pesos. Mention here, there's a sixteen thousand pesos.
The Specialty Mental Health Service Package, sir, it goes to the health facility as well.
And every patient, sixteen thousand, for the entire year?
For every patient for one year.
For one year, and they're allowed to see the facility for twelve times, that's once a month?
So the coverage po is a maximum of twelve. So if a patient really needs four, four sessions lang po, that would be covered. And if the patient needs more than twelve sessions, the health facility can charge the patient. Or if the patient is an indigent member po, uh, the health facility absorbs the expenses for excess number of sessions.
So 'yung mga inpatients pala, that would require confinement, additional burden na yun ng pasyente, ano?
Uh, inpatient care is a different benefit package po. We already have an existing benefits for patients needing admission to health facilities. So what we are talking about earlier is the outpatient mental health package.
And um, may I know, 'yung inpatient niyo na ano, services, na package?
Uh, it's for a lot
Excuse me, that would be applied to any tertiary hospital?
Yes, sir.
Hindi na kaila accredited siya, ano, ng, ng itong analyst program?
Yes, sir.
So pwede ko po malaman, for ano lang, information, magkano po ang package na sa hospital?
Uh, there, yes, po. The, the benefit package for mental and behavioral disorders admitted in hospitals is seven thousand eight hundred per episode, per admission, I mean, per admission.
Per admission, ganun lang. And uh, package, wow, seven thousand lang. Paano 'yung mga medicines nun, mga, lahat ng ano nun, interventions, hindi sakop?
Uh, sakop, sir, ng, it's uh, what we call the case-based payment. So sakop po niya lahat ng services, the labs, the room and board, the medicines, and uh, services from the doctors.
Did say a patient, a ex- ex- supre- patient, pinasok siya, then stayed uh, for a week? So 'yung daily visits ng doctor, covered na ba doon? Ano bang? Gusto ko malaman, ano, kasi ganito yan, marami, marami tayong mga constituents na ginagapos na nga lang. So gusto ko ipasok lahat sa hospital, because meron pa lang package na ganito. Gusto ko lang malaman kung may burden pa ako bilang congressman, kasi minsan mahingi sa akin. Kung magkano, pwede kong shell out, pa may own pocket kung kulang. Gusto ko ang malaman, anong actual case, in a certain actual case, let's Let's say a twenty-five-year-old male, nagkaroon na ex- suprenic attack. Iko-confine siya ngayon, magkano nga makocover in five days' time with a basic routine, uh, medication given by psychiatrists?
The actual coverage of fill-up is seven thousand eight hundred per admission, sir. As for the expenses po, I would like to defer the question to our health hos- health facilities here.
You know, yes, we are, are experts here from clinical, from the clinicians. Estimate lang po, ito naman, ano lang, aking guidance na lang sa akin. Uh, Madam Chair, if you can, as our clinicians here, practitioners?
We would like to recognize Doctor Reyes, Noel Reyes. Uh, make your, uh, uh, comments and suggestions short in your answers. So, uh, in the interest of time, we need to, uh, wrap up because we will be using the same venue for another committee meeting.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll first answer the good Congressman, and then I'll have a two-minute summation of my comment.
Go ahead.
Of course, sir, the, uh, field rate for the inpatient is not suffice, because it's seven. But however, if you, if you bring your patient to any government facility, no, uh, the facility will cover the rest. So there would be no out-of-pocket for the patient, no, as long as it's accredited.
Accredited.
If I may allow, be allowed to, uh, uh, make my, uh, stand, position on this. As mentioned by the good Senator Napali Gonzalez, the, uh, House Bill four-two-nine was drafted by the National Center for Mental Health. And so I would differ from commenting already from, for this bill. However, um, there's some, uh, Section Two provides that the states should prioritize the needs of the children and adolescent, particularly the disabled. It is respectfully recommended to change the words, the disabled to those with disability. And Section Eight, as pointed out by, uh, Doctor, uh, Uson, uh, whenever possible, child and adolescent mental health services should be located separately. It is also respectfully recommended to reconsider this provision, as it may be a non-exclusive measure. So separate mental health facility may not be necessary, no? Um, Congressman, um, uh, Sa- the good Congressman, Representative Sato, was asking about the gaps. As a mental facility, NCMH, let me provide the gaps that I have seen in the field. No, based on the Mental Health Act. Number one, uh, as, as you pointed out, uh, why is there no um, significant change in terms of all these parameters? Number one would be stigma, no? The culture, our culture still have stigma. It prevents two ways. It prevents the patient from seeking help, and it prevents the community from taking back that patient. No, another gap is by the law, one-one-zero-three-six. National Center for Mental Health has its own section in that law, Section Thirty. The National Center for Mental Health shall enhance its research capabilities. I don't know if it's going to be an act of legislation, but we've already proposed our manpower complement based on all these mandates. Universal Healthcare Act, uh, Mental Health Act, and the certified framework of the Department of Health. I, we wish as an institution for it to be approved. I'll give you a prime example of gap. The NCMH shall enhance its research capabilities. Do I even have a research assistant in my plantilla? Nothing. So, mental health information system, I should be the one to, uh, like the, uh, Doctor Yabado have said. It's a task sa akin, sa NCMH. However, there are no computer programmers, program developers for me to develop a program for all the institutions in the regions to use so that the data would be transmitted to us to collate. No, so I wish the DBM is here because we've already proposed our manpower complement since May of this year. And I hope, I hope it gets approved, because we really need to, as, uh, as one of you, uh, our honorable Congressman has pointed out, the Mental Health Act has been here for five years already. And we wish to really speed up. I promise you and rest assured that the National Center for Mental Health will implement all these mandates that's being given to us. If you listen to all the different government agencies, NCMH has been mentioned, the Department of Health, now that field help, no? It is because we are at the forefront of this, implementing the, ma'am, the, uh, Mental Health Act. And, uh, this Mental Health Act, by the way, is a rights-based act. And, and so, we really need to improve on all aspects, facilities, service provision, no? Even for us to provide an evidence-based treatment procedure so that it would be all, all the medications that we're giving to the patients are efficacious, safe, no? Uh, we can do this. We are, no, mandated to do this, but please, uh, help us in terms of funding and in terms of our HRH manpower complement. Uh, NCMH is, uh, is already, uh, in the middle of its transition. We are no longer treatment and curative. We are now diversifying into community-based mental health, capacitation and training of all, uh, barangay health workers. May I just cite the example of, uh, our pilot, uh, barangay, Kulion and Coron, wherein there are no psychiatrists there, but they are admitting an acute psychiatric unit. And, uh, the referral, NCMH being the end hospital, the referrals, uh, hospital, we receive calls from their primary physicians, no? And then we, we help them manage. So that would be a short action program for the deficit of psychiatrists, no? In a nutshell, there are point sixty-six, wala paong one, point sixty-six psychiatrists per one hundred Filipinos. Hundred thousand, hundred thousand Filipinos. Ganyan po, sabi nila dying breed daw kami. No, but I guess, uh, proper promotion and advocacy to the schools. And, uh, kasi ang long-term plan po talaga is psychiatric residency program is four years. So ba- bago pa sila maka-graduate. After graduating from college, they take up a four-year medicine course, one-year internship, four-year again residency before they can become a psychiatrist.
Okay, Doctor.
Thank you po. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you so much. Um, for and, uh, very quick, okay, uh, Representative Miguel?
Yes, ma'am, uh, very quick question lang po. Pwede po ba, uh, ma-cover dun sa outpatient, yung telemedicine?
Uh, pwede naman pong pag-aralan. We just have to have a standard, uh, standard practice or clinical practice guideline for telemedicine. Uh, para, para po alam natin kung at par ba o dekalidad yun serbisyon ibibigay pagka nagkaroon po ng coverage for telemedicine.
O, better, pag-aralan po natin ng masinsinan mo. Kasi there are clinicians, neurologists, psychiatrists, who to prefer, uh, to go and practice through telemedicine. Baka pwedeng ma-accredit natin sila as outpatient.
Thank you. Thank you, Doctor Miguel. Um, uh, for in consideration of all the comments, no, and, uh, the manifestations of, uh, support and suggestions that we heard in this deliberation on the bills. And, uh, for those who still want to give their manifestations, please submit your position papers and, uh, of this, uh, bill on the mental health benefits and services and youth suicide intervention and prevention. Uh, for all the bills, now, uh, may I suggest, uh, that we now make a motion?
Madam Chair, yeah, thank you very much. Nakakalungkot, ang dami nating problema sa Pilipinas. Galing kami sa trade and industry, maraming problema dun. Education, ganun din. Dito sa health, agriculture, everywhere. I think, uh, we need to do a lot of things for our country. Yung po sa inyo, Doctor Manuel, siguro huwag niyo nang ilipa, ay, ano kaagad sa DBM? Puta kayo sa DOH, yung mga tao dun na iba pwedeng ilipat sa inyo para gawin yung kanilang trabaho. Kasi ang dami, masyadong ang gobyerno natin, we have one point eight million people in government. And we have about six hundred sixty thousand na mga contract workers sa gobyerno natin. Eh, kung dadaglagan pa natin yan, bawat probinsya, munisipyo, merong psychiatrists, may psychologists. Siguro abo tayo ng, uh, dalawang million. Eh, problema rin natin yun, yung budget natin. But anyway, hindi po yun ang ano ko. Ang role ko po ngayon is, uh, ito, I would like to move, uh, Madam Chair, that we consolidate House Bills four-two-nine, four-two-seven-eight-nine, three-four-two-four, three-five-eight-two, four-three-seven-seven, eight-four-seven-zero, and, uh, eight-eight-eight-four. Uh, I so move, uh, Madam Chair.
Second. Second.
We have a motion, uh, for the consolidation of House Bills number four-two-nine, uh, two-seven-eight-nine, three-four-two-four, three-five-eight-two, four-three-seven-seven, eight-four-seven-zero, and eight-eight-eight-four. Um, duly seconded, and there being no, uh, objections, uh, the motion is approved. Congratulations to our authors. We will now be proceeding, uh, uh, for the la- two, last two items in our agenda. We still have, uh, two national bills, which focus on the prevention and intervention of suicide on the youth. Uh, these are House Bill, uh, numbers four-seven-four-one and House Bill, uh, uh, House Bill four-seven-four-one of, uh, Villia Fuerte, Representative Luis Ramon El Rey, uh, Villia Fuerte, Miguel Luis, uh, Chiyoshi Anthony Horibata, and, uh, Nicolas Enciso the Eighth. And we also have House Bill number five-one-zero-seven by Representative, uh, Gastam Bunting. And we will now be, uh, calling on, uh, Honorable Representative Marco to, uh, sponsor the bill.
Yeah, uh, thank you very much, Madam Chair. I was asked by all these authors to, uh, present their, uh, bills this morning. And I so move, uh, Madam Chair, that we adopt the sponsorship speeches of, uh, House Bills four-seven-four-one and five-one-oh-seven as the sponsorship, uh, speeches of, uh, Congressman Villia Puerta et al. and Congressman, uh, Gastam Bunting. I so move, Madam Chair.
Second.
We have a motion, uh, for the approval of House Bill numbers, uh, four-seven-four-one and House Bill number five-one-zero-seven duly seconded. Uh, there being no objection, the motion is approved. Uh, do we still have other matters? Wala na. So, uh, may I hear a motion?
Madam Chair.
Yes, uh.
There being no other matters to discuss and deliberate, I move to adjourn.
Thank you, uh, sir, uh, Representative Gato. The Committee on Health, uh, meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.